Call this closed session meeting to order for May 12th, 2025. Current time is four o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling your role?
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Benable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Councilmember Beaver.
And do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the Executive Conference Room. Current time is still four o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call to order this regularly scheduled City Council meeting, Housing Authority, and Successory Agency meeting. Current time is six o'clock on May 12th, 2025. We'll have the invocation is going to be done by Pastor Vaughn, followed by the Pledge Legions by our captain. Would you please stand, please?
Shall we bow our heads for prayer? Almighty God, we come to you with a humble heart. We acknowledge that without you we are nothing, and that we need your help and direction in everything we do. We thank you for these gifted leaders you have given us and our city. We pray that as the City Council of Ucaipa conducts their meeting tonight, that you will fill them with wisdom as they discuss and deliberate on the issues and items before them. May every decision be guided by your Spirit as they work together in love and unity for the progress of the city and for the good of everyone in our community. Grant them, Lord, the strength, courage, and the ability to serve, and may your blessings be upon them and the people in the city of Ucaipa. In your name we trust and pray. Amen and amen.
Please pledge your hand over your heart, please. Ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great all the way before which stands, what nation underground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain Walker and Pastor Vaughn. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Benable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Mr. City Attorney, anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The only reportable action from closed session is under Item A. The City Council gave direction to initiate this code enforcement case by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Interim City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, we have a special presentation by YAPs. Those unable to attend tonight, okay, so let's see here. Public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we will start with Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mary Ruder. And if I can just remind the public, three minutes, please, and if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Hanson Wong, 3515 Court Street, Ucaipa, California. And thank you, City Council and Mayor, for allowing us to give you our opinions. So, I've been thinking of this new year and a new fiscal year coming up, and many different areas that we have to look at and decide on. So, as some people say, follow the process or do it by the numbers. Some of you understand that in your particular careers as well. And in my line of work, if you don't follow the numbers, it could be the wrong limb, the wrong patient. So, you've got to make sure that you do it step by step and not rush things. And so, example of something that we have to consider looking at following the process is the three-quarter specific plan. It has five different options. Normally, if we have options that were not presented before, it would go before the Planning Commission. And if there's changes in which there are proposed changes of coding changes and zoning changes, I consider that the major as well. So, I think that you selected a group of knowledgeable people on the Planning Commission, and they should at least offer their opinions. I also think that all five options need to be clearly defined, and options three is somewhat defined, four and five is a little more, less defined. In order to make the proper decision, because this is a major thing that will affect us throughout, at least my lifetime, if not some of yours, I think we need to do it carefully. I realize this has been in the books a long time, but our present City Council has only been working on it this year. They need to look at all the different nuances. So, I would suggest that we follow all the steps we need to follow, get all the information we need to get, and do it for the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Mary Ruder, followed by Rachel Gusterson.
Well, hello, councilpeople. Mary Ruder, I live on the north bench, and I am representing the Chamber of Commerce, as usual. So, the chamber would like to publicly thank the City Council and city officials, fire and police officials who attended the Raising Haynes ribbon cutting on May 5th. It was a great event with over forty state, county, and local officials present, as well as a number of chamber directors and chamber members. Now, the next scheduled chamber ribbon cutting will be on June, yeah, June 13th for Guiding Hope Counseling Center, which is in Uptown, located on Avenue A and Adams Street. And the chamber looks forward to seeing the same kind of enthusiastic participation and attendance for the ribbon cutting for this small local business as we did for this national chain that is going to benefit our city. Now, I have one more thing to talk about. A few weeks ago, several of the Uptown businesses were visited by Code Enforcement Officer Pamela Swantek. As a rep for many of the businesses through the Chamber of Commerce, I would like to publicly commend Ms. Swantek for her professionalism and her helpfulness. So, she came to talk to us about the fact that, you know, many of us had put up big flags in front of our business as part of advertising. And so, she was reminding us that there's a requirement for a permit for that that some of us were not knowledgeable about, and some of us were just kind of ignoring until we got caught. So, we got caught. So, I told her, okay, I'm going online, and I will get that permit done. She was lovely, and I went online. The website was not friendly. I had great difficulty, and so, I could not complete my permit. It asked for something that I did not know what it was, a site plan. What the heck is that? I make jam. So, I don't know anything about site plans. So, after forty minutes of frustration, finding the permit, getting it to open up, trying to fill it out, I finally sent Pamela an email and said, I'm sorry, I really wanted to do this. I can't because it's making me crazy. Not only was she very kind and replied immediately, she showed back up in my store to help me. And so, I really appreciate that personally, and I know the other business, because I've talked to some of them, appreciate what she was doing too. So, thank you to Pamela Swantek. She was absolutely lovely.
Good evening, Rachel Gusterson, Ucaipa Calamasa News Mirror, and also Ucaipa Calamasa Veterans Committee. Hello and good evening, Honorable Mayor John Thorpe and councilmembers. I am president of the newly formed nonprofit group, Ucaipa Calamasa Veterans Committee, but the committee itself is not new. We've been putting on programs for Memorial Day and Veterans Day for decades, even before the city's incorporation. Of course, I wasn't born then, but I hear the committee has been in existence for several decades. We hold our annual Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, the 26th, at 10:00 a.m. at Desert Lawn Memorial Park. We invite each one of you to attend. It's a beautiful program that honors American military personnel who died while serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, both during peacetime and wartime. This day is a reflection and remembrance, acknowledging the ultimate sacrifice made by these individuals in defense of our great, great nation. This year, we're featuring a World War II aircraft flyover and several speakers, including a special fifth grader, who will be sharing his story about his dad. His dad is a twenty-five-year veteran who is currently deployed. It's going to be a wonderful program, and I am here to invite, excuse me, each one of you to attend, and everyone in the audience, please come and honor our vets.
I'm a member of the committee along with Rachel and Catherine Sariani here, and Ms. Johns, and Bracchetti, I don't know her last name, but I know Bob has spoken at our Veterans Day ceremony before, and I just, even though it says veterans of Ucaipa Calamasa, we are based in Ucaipa with a P.O. box here, but we are over across the county line for one of our events. And I just want to thank the council in advance for their support in the past and hopefully their ongoing support for our upcoming Veterans Day. As soon as we're done in Memorial Day, we start planning for our Veterans Day, which will be over at the Community Park Amphitheater. So, I just wanted to extend an invitation like Rachel did, but thank you in advance for allowing us to be part of the community here for Veterans Day. So, thank you kindly for your time.
I have no more public comments.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that brings us to our portion of the agenda where if there is a conflict with City Council members, now would be the time to declare it. Seeing none, hearing none?
Councilmember, you would want to note yours on Item 15.
Yes, on Item 15, I will be abstaining from that particular item due to my current employment of the sheriff's warrant. With that in mind, does anybody have any items they want to pull from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to pull Item Number 11.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, with that in mind, do I have a motion to accept the agenda items as presented? One through ten, twelve through fifteen, I'll have to abstain from fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent as worded by the mayor just now with the understanding that I will abstain from Item Number One in light of my absence from that meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that'll bring us to Item Number 11.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Item Number 11 is regarding the summary vacation of right-of-way for a property located on Fifth Street. Several years ago, staff received authorization to proceed with the right-of-way acquisition for the intersection improvements or the roundabout improvements at Fifth Street and Avenue E. There were four or five properties that were impacted by the, that will be impacted by the construction of that project, and staff received authorization to proceed with the right-of-way acquisition. This was one of the properties where a full take or a full acquisition was required. The city went through the process and purchased the property, including the home on the property, and when the property transfer was recorded, the entire property was recorded as public right-of-way. And so, what this recommended, this recommendation before you tonight will essentially recreate the lot or the parcel where the house sits for further, for disposition at a future date. And if this item is approved tonight, we will be coming back to City Council with the recommendation for the disposition of not only this property, but several other properties that the city has acquired for several other projects where the full property is not required, only a portion of the property.
Thank you. This is in my district, and I went and checked it out this morning just to make sure for sure where it was, and it reminded me of the fact that we have those two houses on the corner, right there in that same area. And so, I was just wondering, when can we expect to see some action on those? That one is in a terrible condition. It needs to be torn down, cleaned up, whatever. The other one is in a little better shape, but it's a real eyesore for that area. And you just, I think, kind of, kind of addressed that in a way, that if this is passed, will that help take care of those areas?
Yes, it will. For the other two properties, we're currently, well, we completed the environmental assessment that's required, and one of those properties on Fifth is going to have, or the home is going to have to be demolished, and there's some work that we have to do ahead of that, you know, to inspect for lead-based paint and asbestos. And you'll be seeing a, an item come before you in the near future for the awarded contract to demo a few homes, not just on Avenue E, but also County Line Road.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions or concerns with it? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Person second, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moves us on to Item Number 16.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This item before you is for our Upper Wildwood Creek Basin Four Project, which is identified in the city's master plan of drainage adopted by City Council in 2012. Staff presented a similar item to council for this project about a month ago on April 14th, when City Council reviewed the bids that were received for this project late last year and recommended rejection of those bids at that time. At that meeting, City Council provided direction for staff to return to council with more information about the project, possible funding options to make up a funding gap that was highlighted last month, as well as the project's viability and alignment with some of the recently adopted 2025 City Council goals. So, I'll jump right in and give a quick recap of the project and then highlight some of the funding options and our recommendations this evening. Before you on the screen here is just a site map of the general location of the project over on the right-hand side. On the upper end of Wildwood Creek, we have our project site shown in yellow there, which is just east of the green highlighted area, our Wildwood Park. And then downstream of those two facilities there is an existing Wildwood Creek Basins constructed in 2011. This next screen here, the slide shows you a little bit more close-up area of the project site, which is adjacent to a recently constructed Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail area, which is one of the benefits of the project we talked about a month ago. This project offers potential access across the creek from Wildwood Canyon Road to that mountain bike trail area. One of the benefits includes flood control protection, a little bit more on the local small-scale side, and I'll get to that more in a moment here. It does facilitate a little groundwater recharge, and then one of the benefits in this corridor here with all of these historic oak trees, we see some erosion and sediment control that will help to result in some habitat preservation. Here before you on the screen is a map of the firm map, the flood insurance rate maps that FEMA puts out. This is a map that shows This is a map that shows this stretch of Wildwood Creek, with the project site over to the right there. And a little bit closer to the center of the screen are Wildwood Creek Basins that were built in 2011. This is the firm or that FEMA map that shows the flood zones in 2008, before the Wildwood Creek Basins were constructed. This next slide I'll show you here is that same stretch of creek with the revision to that FEMA map that was constructed, conducted after the Wildwood Basins were put into operation, which are, by the way, maintained by the county of San Bernardino Flood Control District. As you can see a little bit better on this next screen here, I put the two maps together so that you could see on the top that map of the pre-Wildwood Creek Basins floodways and flood zones in Wildwood Creek. And then on the bottom part of the screen here, we see that remapped, that rezoned creek section where a significant amount, if not all of the properties along Wildwood Creek for much of the stretch of that section are now removed from the flood plain as a result of that Wildwood Creek Basin project. The project that's proposed here on the right-hand side of the screen, our Upper Wildwood Creek Basin project, although it does have some local benefits from a flood control perspective and reduce peak flows downstream and help with some of that erosion we're seeing on those vertical slopes, it is not anticipated to remove any additional properties from the flood zones downstream there, like we've seen in some of our larger projects. This next slide is a slide that we looked at last month with the overall project cost estimates. At the very top end there, that number was, is an estimate primarily based on the low bid that we received, as well as some of the other construction costs that are anticipated. The next two items there are related to the environmental permitting requirements. With those permits that were obtained recently, there would be a significant amount of required environmental mitigation and monitoring, biological, archaeological monitoring, and different considerations once construction starts that would start taking place. And then for years to come, a significant amount of cost to offset those impacts from the construction in the creek. So that's those two items there, about $3 million, bringing us to that almost $7 million project cost estimate there. And with the available funding that we have to date, close to $2.7 million, that leaves us with that pretty significant funding gap if we were to move into construction. And so the report before you this evening does highlight some of the different funding options that might be available to us, similar to the report we discussed a while back about the library project where it provided some different options, different alternatives to consider making up that funding gap should we move into construction. Those are highlighted in the report for you. I should note that if the decision this evening were to be made to delay the construction of this project, that would not result in any direct damages or immediate safety risks as a result of that postponing construction. Moving forward with construction would have an impact on some other CIP projects. There is a list of projects that are in the report as well that have been prioritized. And so if we move into construction, that could affect the timing of those other projects and some of those benefits that would come with that construction. With that in mind, and keeping those 2025 city council adopted goals with respect to enhancing the emergency preparedness, establishing a strategic plan, and also establishing a long-term financial plan, with all of those considerations in mind, and that significant funding gap that we just highlighted, staff is recommending that the city council this evening receive and report, the report on the potential project funding options, also to delay the construction of the project at this time and really take a close, hard look at this project with the strategic planning effort that's going to be taking place with the goal to really come up with the long-term sustainable funding strategy for this and potentially even re-scoping the project to achieve some of those erosion control benefits and reduce the costs for a potentially revised project. And also to direct staff to request that the grant funding that's currently allocated to this project be reallocated for other projects. If there are eligible projects we have, that we can re-appropriate those funds. That would require some coordination with those grant partners and agencies to identify those potential opportunities, and we would certainly work hard to reallocate that to another project, probably with similar benefits, groundwater recharge and flood protection. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
This is the project that J.K. Escavating was a low bidder on, and we were so far from our estimated to theirs.
That is correct.
How did that, how'd that happen? How come we were so low and, I mean...
Great question. Yeah, we did discuss that last month. And one of the things that we looked at closely when we got those bids in was the cost to export that material on the order of about $17 per cubic yard. This project is a pretty significant excavation in this small area without a designated immediately adjacent stockpile site like we've had on other projects like Wilson III. The cost to export it to another location outside of the city ended up being a lot higher than originally anticipated. Those costs that we saw for some of the other large excavation projects in town were way lower than $17 a cubic yard, even closer to 2 back when we originally excavated Wilson III Basin. So I think that was one of the main reasons why the prices were so high. We did identify a location at the park parking lot where some of the seeds that need to be harvested could be stockpiled. But other than that location immediately next to this proposed basin, we didn't have a site that could sustain that 80,000 yards or so of export material that would need to be trucked away. That was one of the primary reasons for the higher price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Quirk, do we have any public comment on this?
No comments on this item.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the item as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
You have a first and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Item number 17, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here to talk about item number 17, ordinance number 455, which is abandoned vehicle abatement here in the city of Ucaipa. Some background on this abandoned vehicle abatement program. As you know, abandoned, inoperative vehicles present serious risks to health, safety, welfare of Ucaipa residents. These vehicles are often attract rodents, insects, and pose fire dangers. They create unsafe conditions for residents and children. Further, their presence on both public and private property degrades property values and detracts from the community's overall presence, appearance. California vehicle codes authorize local jurisdictions to enact ordinances to address the removal of nuisance vehicles. The proposed ordinance aligns with these state regulations while incorporating enforcement mechanisms tailored to Ucaipa's needs. You should note that there are currently 37 counties in California that have a similar ordinance to this. San Bernardino County is not one of the counties that has adopted the abandoned vehicle abatement program. However, our neighboring county Riverside has, and it's thriving. Ordinance number 455 will add vehicle abatement to the Ucaipa Municipal Code and establishes procedures for the abatement and removal of abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, or inoperative vehicles. This ordinance provides a structured approach to identifying, notifying, and removing abandoned vehicles. Property owners and vehicle owners will be given notice and the opportunity to correct the violations before the city takes any action. If necessary, the city may initiate the removal proceedings and impose other penalties. Ordinance number 455 will help improve Ucaipa's community aesthetics, eliminate safety hazards, and promote neighborhood integrity by addressing longstanding concerns about vehicle nuisances throughout the city. That's the conclusion of my report, unless council has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woolsey?
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you so much for this ordinance. On the corner of 3rd and Avenue E, and I have some neighbors that live in that area here tonight, which I'm glad to see them here. We have had cars sit on that corner for years. They've not been moved, they're inoperable, and they need to be gone. And I know that I ask you, if you could look into this, I appreciate doing that. So we have two readings, is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
And then how soon after that second reading can we get those cars moved?
I believe 30 days? 30 days.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes, this program is designed specifically for a residence like you're describing.
Yes.
Somebody who has cars that are abandoned in the driveway, that are overhanging on the street or on the sidewalk.
Right.
And unfortunately, no matter how many times we've attempted to make contact, how many parking tickets we put on the vehicle, it still blocks the sidewalk. And really, at this point, there's nothing that we can do until the passing, if you choose to pass this ordinance.
Yes, thank you.
So I'm reminded of like the broken window theory, right? We want the community to look good because ultimately our goal, and has been for quite some time, is to drive down crime to the point where we are, well, now we can continue to be the safest city of our size in California, ninth safest city in the country. But that means we're still eight places behind first place safest city of our size in the nation, so we still need to be working towards that. So this is another example of an opportunity for us to capitalize on a longstanding theory of when you have these broken windows or you have these vehicles that are sitting there and creating truly a blight to the community, we're able to take action. With that being said, I don't want to appear to be the city that's coming and snatching cars out of your driveway. I like that you said, there's going to be opportunity. This is not something that we're going to come around in the middle of the night and just take away cars that are, that we, as a city or enforcement officers, deem to be a nuisance. Plenty of opportunity for correction, encouraging correction, working with the community to overcome it, maybe. I was speaking to some people regarding this particular item who are unaware that there is even type of like, you know, cars for kids or ecology that comes and actually will pay you money to remove the vehicle if it's not value to you. So I think this is spot on getting our, keeping our city safe.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yeah, I just dovetail on what councilmember Beaver said. It's all about quality of life, right, Trevor? If you can, you can get them things in the beginning, right? If it's predictable, it's preventable, right? And you can create an environment of less crime. It's always great to take credit for less crime. I just always knock on wood, it doesn't go up after you do that. But thank you for what you do and the importance of them units that go out there and deal with them quality of life issues. And sometimes the public doesn't understand them little things that you're cleaning up actually have impact down the road. Can maybe talk to the public a little bit about that, what that really means? I mean, obviously, we're in the business, we understand what that means. But maybe explain that a little bit, these quality of life issues through code enforcement and the different programming you're doing with the Sheriff's Department, how that really does affect crime levels in our community, which have been great as Councilman Beaver pulled out.
Yeah, like you said, Councilman, it's the broken windows theory type policing. The abandoned house next door that may be right today, you know, isn't a problem, but one day, a window gets broken on it. And then the next day, some transients find this property and they move in. And next thing you know, they're burglarizing your house when you leave for work. So it's these small things, and if we can tune them up ahead of time and get ahead of them, hopefully we can stop those things from happening.
Anything else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
I want, can I make the motion?
You can make a motion. We're going to do a roll call vote, but go ahead.
Oh, okay, I just thought there had to be a motion.
You can make a motion.
Okay, I just want to move that ordinance number 455 be approved.
Then do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. And Madam Quirk, could you, hold the roll, please?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 455, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ucaipa, California, adding chapter 10.16 to title 10 of the Ucaipa Municipal Code regarding vehicle abatement.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think I could just stay up here, right? I mean, I've got the next couple, all right.
You've got the next couple.
While I'm up here, let's talk about item number...
18.
18. That's going to be ordinance number 456 is regarding towing in the city of Ucaipa. As you all know, towing services for law enforcement, fire department, and code enforcement are a necessary function every single day. To support these enforcement actions, in accordance with vehicle code, the authority to remove vehicles, the city requires the services of an official police tow service, provider for the efficient and safe removal of vehicles from the roadways. These services are necessary to provide roadside assistance or tow services for disabled motorists, the removal of inoperative vehicles, vehicles involved in traffic collisions, the removal of vehicles or other objects creating traffic hazards, or to impound abandoned vehicles or the impoundment of vehicles as criminal evidence. In previous years, the Sheriff's Department has conducted these services for us. We're looking to bring these in-house so the city conducts these services. To efficiently provide necessary services in a manner expected by the city, the official police tow service must meet requirements pertaining to its location, response time, accessibility, lot size, storage capability, security, and designated space for evidence storage. The provider of the facility must be in a location that's convenient for community members. And that's the biggest change from previous years to this year. Bringing it in-house allows us to regulate what tow companies we choose to do business with. And we believe that having a tow company that has a yard and a business inside Ucaipa benefits the city residents. For example, if your tow, if your car was towed and you're a Ucaipa resident, but your car is towed to outside the city of Ucaipa, it's even more difficult for you. You're already burdened by the fact that your car was towed. But now to travel outside the city makes it even more difficult. As you'll notice in the staff report, in previous years, the Ucaipa Police Department or the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department would select or determine the official police towing service providers. We believe that bringing this action into the city's purview would better serve our residents. An attachment on here is a sample TSA or tow service agreement. It's defined as Attachment 1, and it contains rules and regulations that a tow company would have to agree to comply with in order to provide tow services to the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department or Ucaipa Police Department here in the city of Ucaipa, as well as other departments within the city like code enforcement, the fire department, and park rangers. That's the end of my report, unless council has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? No? With that, do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you, getting a little excited there. All right, now I'll take the motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
First and a second, those in favor?
Aye. Roll call.
Mayor, can we get a roll call vote, please?
See, I concentrated on one thing and messed up on the other. All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 456, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ucaipa, California, adding chapter 10.20 to title 10 of the Ucaipa Municipal Code regarding vehicle towing.
All right.
Item 19?
Back to you.
Okay. Item number 19, this is going to be ordinance number 457, 457, amending fireworks fines to address extreme fire risk. As you know, here in the city of Ucaipa, we're uniquely situated in the foothills of the San Bernardino Mountains, surrounded by wildland urban interface, zones that are highly susceptible to wildfires. With ongoing drought conditions, low humidity, and increasing average temperatures, that the risk of a fast-moving and destructive wildfire has escalated significantly. The use of illegal fireworks presents an immediate and substantial threat to life, property, and the environment. Despite ongoing public outreach, enforcement efforts, public safety... public safety campaigns, illegal firework activity continues to occur annually, especially around the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve. Ucaipa's geographic location places much of the city adjacent to or within very high fire or high fire danger zones, defined by CAL FIRE. The presence of dry brush, steep terrain, and prevailing winds create an ideal condition for the rapid spread of fire. A single firework, as you all know, can, in these conditions, can ignite a fire that endangers homes, disrupts emergency services, and jeopardize lives. Our current administrative fine is one hundred dollars for the display, sale, possession of, ignition of either one point three or one point four fireworks. One point three, the best way I could describe it is something that goes up into the air and explodes. One point four would be something that's on the ground and ignites on the ground. We believe that this is insufficient to deter illegal activity. In practice, relatively low penalty does not reflect the true public safety hazard posed by fireworks use. It also fails to incentivize responsible behavior during high-risk periods. By comparison, cities facing similar fire risks, including those in San Diego, Orange, and Los Angeles Counties, have adopted significantly higher fire fines, ranging from one thousand to five thousand dollars per violation, with demonstrated reductions in violations following the implementation of these fines. On page two of my staff report, you'll see a comparison of our neighboring cities. Banning's up to a thousand dollars. Beaumont's a thousand dollars for the first violation, twenty-five hundred for the second, and five thousand for each additional. Colton, three thousand for the first violation, five thousand for the second, and it goes on and on. If you notice, I'm not sure if yours is colored like mine is, however, the highlighted section at the bottom, where it's yellow, it says city of Ucaipa, one hundred dollars. The proposed revision to the fine structure is as follows. The first violation is fifteen hundred dollars. The second viol, and subsequent violations would be three thousand dollars. In conclusion, given, given Ucaipa's elevated wildfire risk and continued use of illegal fireworks, increasing the administrative fines is a necessary and proportionate measure to protect the community. Staff recommends that council adopts the proposed ordinance, amending fireworks fine structure to fifteen hundred for the first violation and three thousand for the second offense. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Woolsey?
Yes, thank you, again.
You're welcome.
Because we did talk about this.
We did, ma'am.
Yes, we did. And I, I realize there's two, two different ways to look at fireworks. First of all, the patriotic view. I'm just as patriotic as anyone else. Grew up with fireworks, city fireworks, J.C.'s had their fireworks stand, they sold it. We did that, we went home and had our own. But unfortunately, fireworks have changed over the years. They've gotten really much more dangerous and destructive. And as you mentioned in your report, with the fire from a gender reveal type thing. That will be covered, covered under this as well, also?
It would, yes, ma'am.
Okay. it's very terrifying and cruel to pets. I can't go anywhere on the fifth, Fourth of July because I have to be home with my dog. July fifth and New Year's Eve are the busiest days for the animal control and the pet shelters. People get injured, and then usually it's that due to their carelessness. But little kids get injured, you know, that just happen to be around that. Our veterans, which we had here this evening, they suffer from PTSD on that. I've heard that many times. It does disrupt people's sleep. Older people have a hard time sleeping at night. And these go on till one, two o'clock in the morning. So just out of curiosity, do we have any numbers on how many people have actually been fined previously and actually paid the fine?
I don't have any numbers on how many people were fined and paid the fine. I know either, I believe last year, the Sheriff's Department served a search warrant in Chapman Heights for a subject who was, I believe, selling fireworks. I also have some statistical information, although I couldn't include it in this report because it, it has a lot of people's personal information on it for just calls for service of how many times the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department has gone out for calls for service. And it's, it's hundreds of times.
Right.
For both agencies.
Right. Well, in our particular area there on Third and E again, we don't have to go to the fireworks. We can sit out on the lawn and watch the fireworks display that's just right in our neighborhood. So my last question will be, is there going to be extra personnel on duty that night?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Councilwoman Boosley, you know, it's always, that's a busy time, especially that week preceding. A lot of calls for service, a lot going on. The enforcement is, that's the hard part. And trying to get enough folks out there to deal with it. I mean, I'm sure you're planning for that, maybe something joint with the Sheriff's and the Fire Department. I don't know, we're using drones, et cetera. I'm sure we're looking at different models. It'll probably be a wake-up call for many people with this type of fine rate. We're not gradually putting it up. There's, you know, it's two things, you can get compliance or you could put a sanction in. I think we're going to sanctions because of the lack of compliance we've had over the last few years, and especially in the fire areas that we have right now. So you're going to be busy. Trying to enact that, I'm sure you're planning accordingly operationally. But you're going to be busy, especially that time of year, if I remember. I could be, could be wrong on that, Captain Walker, but I don't think things have changed that much over the years. That's a busy time of calls for service, but I'm sure you'll handle it. But thanks for bringing this forward to us.
Yes, sir.
Sanctions are probably where we need to go now because we're not getting compliance.
I got a couple of things. I think this is great. Though I would like to see the fines be a little stiffer, honestly. I'll say a couple of things, then I'll make a suggestion. I think it was Friday night, I was starting to look at the agenda when I got home, sitting in my living room, and I think it felt like someone let off a mortar in my living room. It was right over our house, it seemed like, and it was very low, very loud. That was very well timed, though, that this happened to be on the agenda. But it was very loud, to get your attention. And to think that that can't start a fire, people don't understand, I have seen it. I was covering one year in Highland for some calls due to certain, certain circumstances. And because of some fireworks that were being let off over there, palm trees were on fire like candles. And they were fully engulfed at the top. And that just, all because of fireworks. And as we were walking up to our call, we had debris from mortars falling all around us like we were in a war zone. Years ago, when I was on patrol on Bryant Street, the Fire Department would have their inspectors, investigators go out and ride with us. We were driving on Bryant towards Oak Glen from the Boulevard behind a red SUV. And in the infinite wisdom of these young people, they didn't realize he was following them. They lit bottle rockets from their back window of their car and just thought it would be neat as they're driving down the vehicle, driving down the road, shooting them out the side windows towards the wash as they're approaching the fire station. So we pulled them over and our inspector or investigator handled the business and took care of what needed to be handled there. But that very easily, none of the brush caught on fire, but it very easily could have. And I just couldn't believe, right in front of me, less than probably thirty feet, I've got four teenagers letting fireworks off out into a brush area that could have very well threatened a lot of homes. My suggestion is that we start at three thousand and we go up to ten in increments, kind of following a little bit of San Bernardino's modeling. I mean, there's, they specified different types of fireworks. But I, I know that the, like Councilman Miller stated, the enforcement part can be the challenge. But when it's done and we're able to figure it out, I want it to be painful so that they don't want to do it again because it'll be painful for a family to figure out where they're going to live if they lose their house. Fire insurance is very difficult these days.
Yep.
And a recent conversation with our fire chief, he was showing me some maps, that the high fire zone and very high fire zones are creeping, and they are creeping into our city a lot. And you think you live in the middle of the city, but it wouldn't take much for something to affect your, your place of residence. Because of that, insurance companies are dropping folks. They're having to get insurance through other means, then they have to get wraparound policies. And even then, it's very, it's super expensive, and you're hoping that it's going to cover everything and you'll be able to get your house back or a place to live. My recommendation, I don't know if council has an appetite for it, but I think people ought to be uncomfortable if they want, if they're going to do this, because it's going to put somebody probably out of their home if the right circumstances exist. If you want to see fireworks, go to some places putting on a professionally monitored and sanctioned event and watch them there. I think back when Justin was an explorer here in Ucaipa, he saw several fires here. I've seen several fires here, where we've had to evacuate people. And I don't know if any of them started with fireworks, but most of the ones that started here were not related to just accidents, though, most of the time. And it's, it's chaotic. So I, I think it ought to be painful in their wallet. So that's my, my suggestion, three thousand up to ten in increments. I don't know if my fellow colleagues have any appetite for that bit.
Yes, certainly. I think that's a great idea. Also, I'm looking through the ordinance itself, and this might be a question more for our city attorney, but in my other life, if the enforcement officer sees the firework coming from a property and can swear under oath or testify later that the property located at one, two, three, four, five, whatever street, was the one discharging the fireworks, the property is cited, not the person. So that if, and even if somebody doesn't want to come out to face the music, citation gets dropped to the mailbox and the property is cited, that's something we can...
That's correct, Councilmember. So the ordinance you have in front of you expressly incorporates chapter one point one two of the municipal code, which is our municipal code update that we did last year that is a complete overhaul of the enforcement mechanisms available to city enforcement officials. If you go to one point one two zero one zero, the definitions, the definition of a responsible person means a person who the enforcement official determines is responsible for causing or maintaining the public nuisance in violation of the code. It includes but is not limited to the property owner, tenant, person with legal interest, or a person in possession of real property. So, you know, if, you might have some teenagers shooting off bottle rockets, but if you're the parents and you're maintaining property where that's going on, the enforcement official can write you as either the tenants in possession or to the property owner themselves. Generally speaking, going after the responsible adults, or I guess so to say, the adults who should be responsible is the more effective enforcement path.
Now, relative to the collection of that fine, I realize that we don't have our public utility here that the city oversees. In my other life, the city of Azusa Light and Water is a municipality. And, and because water is pretty important to put in our fires, these fines are attached to the water bill of the property. Is that something we can, would it, would it take something?
We would have to negotiate the authority to collect through the water bill with the applicable water utility. So I mean, the main ones, obviously, Ucaipa Valley, but we have a couple other mutuals. We have several other collection methodologies available to us outside of utility billing that are very effective. You know, including placing it on property tax roll as a special assessment if necessary. So I'm not, we try to be very cost efficient on our collection process, but we will be collecting those fines.
Mr. Councilman, it, it would go through Dated Ticket, which is our contractor that processes all of our code enforcement fines. And for somebody who doesn't pay, you'd go to the state controller's office. It's an option for us. And it would be attached to their tax return. So if for some, let's say they had a three thousand dollar fine, five thousand dollar tax return, the first three thousand dollars should come to the city of Ucaipa.
So as Trevor was mentioning, we have the ability to seize your tax refund, intercept it before it goes to you if, if we have a fine that's valid with, with the city of Ucaipa. But we do have several collection methods available to us. That's the most common one used by the city.
Well, if it's time for a motion, I'll, motion to approve with the mayor's modifications.
I'll second that one. Three thousand in the beginning.
So we have a first and a second, mine and yours? Okay. Roll call. Well, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
All right, now roll call. I'll get the hang of this eventually.
You're doing great, sir. Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Venable?
Now, this is for the higher fines, right?
Correct. This would be as amended. So I believe it was three thousand for the first.
Three thousand for the first, you want five thousand for the second, and ten thousand for the third?
Correct.
And subsequent.
And subsequent, correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Motion carried to approve the...
You didn't ask mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to be heard.
I'm sorry, Mayor Thorpe.
This is I'm messing up everything. I got this part right. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number four fifty-seven, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ucaipa, California, adding chapter eight point four zero to title eight of the Ucaipa Municipal Code Regarding Fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number twenty, Mr. White?
I'm going to start. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The city team is pleased to present the balanced draft fiscal year twenty-six budget for your review and consideration. When we asked the voters to support Measure S, city council made a clear commitment to use those funds to help balance the budget without compromising public safety. The draft budget before you this evening honors that commitment. Achieving this outcome, however, was not without its challenges. Revenues from Measure S and the increased waste holler franchise fees have helped to address the city's structural shortfall. However, these measures alone are not sufficient to fully meet our ongoing financial obligations. The public safety budget, which includes police, fire, paramedic, and code enforcement, currently stands at thirty-one million dollars. The concern today and in future, and in the future, is our primary revenue sources of property taxes, including paramedic assessments, and sales tax, including Measure S, total approximately twenty-seven point eight million dollars. This is not enough to cover the cost of public safety alone. Compounding this issue, the fire fund saving account will be fully depleted during fiscal year twenty-six. As a result, the general fund will need to absorb the cost of fire and paramedic services, which in turn will put pressure on funding other city essential services. We are already seeing the efforts to deliver a balanced budget. We had to implement strategic reductions totaling six point two million dollars across city programs, services, and training, which are depicted on page number three nineteen of the packet. The council's goal, both past and present, have consistently focused on enhancing the quality of life for its residents in the community. To continue to meet this goal and maintain the programs and services that this community has come to expect, in, in the future, we must confront some difficult choices and identify new revenue sources. Consider adjustments to public safety staffing and/or service levels, and further reduce other city services. Despite these fiscal constraints, the city team remains committed to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and overall service to the community of Ucaipa. I want to take a moment to thank the entire management staff for their hard work and dedication. The final budget will continue to raise the bar for transparency and usability. A special acknowledgement goes to the entire budget team consisting of coordinators, liaisons, content creators, and the whole finance department for their efforts in preparing the draft budget before you. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to the Director of Finance, Phil White.
Thank you, Jennifer. Evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of city council. The city council goals for 2025 listed here represents a to-do list. Council has told the city manager that these are the things you want to accomplish during 2025. This item, the draft budget, is Jennifer's spending plan to reach those goals. Coincidentally, goal number one also directly relates to this item. The important series to understand that the city council leads by pointing the city manager in a direction. The city manager's budget is a spending plan to reach those goals, and staff executes the plan. In other words, the city council says jump, Jennifer says how high, and her staff develops the budget to execute the jump. The final budget book... The final budget book contains a lot of detail, and my goal tonight is to provide a high level summary of the draft budget. Tonight is also an opportunity for the city council as a, as a last call to tweak the directives before final adoption scheduled for June, June 9th. The goal of balancing the budget is a directive pointed at two funds, the general fund and the public safety fund. So overall, we said, or you said, deliver a, an option for a balanced budget. That, there's a lot of different funds within the city that do a lot of different things. That directive is general fund, public safety fund, our two primary operating funds. In the, in the big picture, balancing, presenting a draft budget, it's a, it's a modest target. It's a low bar. It's a fundamental requirement. A balanced budget should be the baseline expectation and one day for Ucaipa, it will be. But today we can, we can celebrate a modest win and then tomorrow we'll set a higher level goal. We are not at the end of our financial management journey. It's a process. We won't get to the end of it. We always want to up, up our level of financial management. Base, step one today is the option for a balanced budget. A couple of disclaimers as we get started. A budget is a single year spending plan. We've talked about that a lot. It's a one-year look. Jennifer talked about some things down the road. A budget is a one-year spending plan. We know that there are issues outside of the one-year period. We are working on those continuously. Also budgets use their own accounting rules that are different than financial statements. So when we talk, when we start seeing all these numbers, just remember we're talking a certain type of apple, golden delicious apples. We're not talking about Fuji or Granny Smith apples. We're talking budget language, not financial statement gap. All right. And these results are solid, but these, this is a draft. And so the numbers that you see on June 9th will change slightly. We have some buttoning up to do. The numbers that you see tonight are solid numbers, but again, draft numbers. Some things to know before we dive in. We're always trying to improve the budget document. We did make a couple of change, well, several changes this year, but a couple that I wanted to highlight. We have made some changes to our org chart. We've added a capital budgeting module to the digital budget book to enhance usability. And we also changed the accounting fund structure. So what that means is last year in our general fund, we had the STARS program included in the general fund. That's been carved out. So all of the revenues and expenditures associated with STARS are no longer in the general fund. It's important to note as we start seeing some of the other charts down, down the way. We've also absorbed the governmental affairs department into the city manager department within the general fund. We've created a separate fund for the mobile home rent stabilization special revenue fund. Anybody that's looking at last year's budget to this year's budget, it's important to note that there are differences. Those are the highlights of those differences. The, being that it's a draft, or with any budget, even after it's adopted, it includes estimation. We don't know, we don't know the future. We can estimate it. We use the best information available to develop those estimates. This is the list of some of the key estimates that are included in the draft. All of the estimates are, are included in the draft. As we get closer to June 9th, we'll go back through based on new information and tighten up estimates for all of these items. A couple of them that I did want to highlight, the fourth bullet, the preliminary schedule A with the, with the county sheriff. That, that was an earlier item on the agenda tonight. That is, has a high degree of estimation. There's a lot of moving parts with that number. The final budget will include not only the schedule A, but staff's estimate of what the final number is going to be. We've been given the heads up that that number may change down the road and we want to capture what we estimate the full cost to be and not shortchange ourselves to get bad news later on. And then again, the fifth bullet, I also wanted to highlight that one, the direction on development. Tonight's, later item tonight is the freeway corridor specific plan, direction on that plan and, and development in general is a key input to developing the budget. The budget is based on what council has directed staff to do. And whenever those high level directions change, it's going to have a budget impact. It may not change immediately, but down the road, it changes our staffing levels required to deliver on council's stated goals. All right, let's discuss preliminary results. This is the, the general fund. And the compilation of the general fund, again, that's changed from prior year. We've carved STARS out of the, the general fund. Also, the mobile home rent stabilization fund is out. But at a high level, inflows, which are revenues and transfers, are approximately $42 million. So inflows into the general fund, $42 million. Outflows, expenditures and transfers out are also $42 million. Forty-two in and forty-two out equals zero net. And so that zero net represents a balanced budget, which is good. The, the PY is prior year. And so you can see we, we have more revenue in, anticipated in fiscal 26. Most of that is measure S. Projected outflows are down slightly from last year. Again, remember STARS being carved out. STARS has over $2 million of programming included in it. So carving that out of the general fund is part of that mix. And then our budgetary balance, which we have accomplished in a draft basis right now. Last year we had a deficit that we were talking about $7.3 million. So we're, we're balanced in our draft now. On the inflow side, that's, that's key revenues to the general fund. Our property tax is $10 million in the general fund. We also have $5 million out in, in another fund. We'll get to that in a, in a minute. But $10 million in the general fund, sales tax in fiscal 26 is going to be $12 million. 5.7 relates to our standard sales tax, $6 million estimate for measure S. All of that wraps up to a rounded $12 million in sales tax. All of that money hits the general fund. Inner governmental is, is grants in our motor vehicle in lieu. That's $8 million. Those are the key inflows into the general fund. And then on the outflow side, salaries and benefits, $10.9 million. Again, prior year was more, but remember STARS programming, the majority of STARS programming is salaries and benefits. So that, that is a part of, of that decrease. Operating expenses are about $10 million, down a million plus from, from last year. Again, some of it, that has to do with STARS and, and the shuffling and our transfers out are, are up. Other than transfers out, if, if we were to force these into apples to apples, we're really flat on, on spending. Salaries and benefits and operating expenses were really flat year to year. The transfers out, we're, we're way up. It was 16.7 last year, 20.3 this year. $18 million of that transfer out is the backfill transfer to the public safety fund and we'll get to that momentarily. This is included in your packet as attachment four. This is the summary of the general fund. A couple of things to point out here, these are the same as the previous slide, just provided in a little more detail on the, on the revenue side. You can see the property tax and sales tax broken out. The 11.7 is the sales tax number, including measure S. And then on the outflow side, those categories are called functions. This is the functional level of, of spending. So we have our general government, community development, building and safety, public works, community services. You don't see public safety here because our public safety is accounted for in our public safety fund. All of those numbers for general government, community development, and so on, they include salaries and benefits, operating and capital cost, all bundled together. And again, part of that transfer out is, the majority of it is a, a transfer out to the public safety fund. One key thing that's worth noting, that 41 and a half million, I rounded up to 42. Part of the final budget, I won't round and I know that I rounded the wrong way. I said 42 million. I should have rounded down to 41. But the number on the inflows equals the numbers on the outflows. That's a balanced budget. That's a zero. All right. Over in our public safety fund, we have inflows and outflows of $31 million that Jennifer alluded to. The, the public safety fund has almost $7 million of revenue hitting the fund. It's $5 million of property tax and a million dollars of a paramedic assessment. Other than that, it's all based on backfill transfers. So Jennifer talked about the fire fund transfer coming in. After all of that is, is accounted for, it's for, that fund is forced to equal zero and the general fund transfers a bunch of money into that fund. So $18 million transfer to this fund. Last year was a $14.8 million transfer from the general fund to force it to equal zero. This is included in your packet as attachment three. It's a summary of the public safety fund. You've got the inflows broken out there. There's the committed property tax and the paramedic assessment. And then on the outflows, total costs by police, fire, paramedic, and code enforcement. Let me jump back one slide. This slide, under contracted services, that is public safety contract. So schedule A for our, for our sheriff's contract and the equivalent for fire and paramedic, that's contract cost. The costs include both contract and non-contract costs. So on the previous slide, that number was the contract number for police. This is our contract and non-contract number for police. So all of that gets added up and charged out to these divisions, police, fire, paramedic. And code enforcement is new to this fund this year. During, during fiscal 25, the administration of code enforcement was moved to public safety and the accounting is catching up in fiscal 26 to account for that in this fund as well. All right. So funding public safety is a little bit confusing. I assure you, it's, it's not a shell game, but it's a little bit confusing. So I did want to take a few minutes to provide a refresher. This, this set of tables was provided last year, but it's worthwhile to add the, the, the picture to, to kind of see what, what we're talking about. There's $31 million of cost in public safety, which means when it's forced to equal zero, we need $31 million of inflows. And there's four inflows that make up that $41 million. The first one is the committed property tax. The 35% commitment of property tax was established by the city council in the nineties. And for a long time, that 35% exceeded the cost of fire protection services. Since it exceeded, we built up a savings account. That was our fire fund. At some point in time, it flipped where we spend more than the 35% and now we take withdrawals from, from that fire fund. As Jennifer alluded to it, fiscal 26, from a budgetary perspective, is key because that is the point in time when that fund will be fully depleted from a budgetary standpoint. That's our first, $5.2 million of committed property tax is, is a revenue, an inflow to that fund. Our second inflow is the paramedic assessment that was established, voter established in the early 2000s. That's between one and 1.1 million dollars each year. There's no escalator on that. We've talked about that a lot. And that's, so that's been the same number since 2004, I believe. In 2004, the paramedic services weren't a million dollars. And so we did the same thing. We built up a, a reserve, a savings account in paramedic. At some point in time, it flipped and we started using that up. The original estimates for this funding source was a decade, 10 years. It was estimated to provide a funding gap, a bridge for 10 years. It lasted closer to 20, so that was really successful. However, 20 years have come and gone. And so now the additional backfill for the paramedic also comes out of the fire fund. So this fund has been fully depleted for, for three, four years now and it's, it's using an additional backfill from the fire fund. Our third funding source for this fund is the fire fund. And so we talked about it flipping and taking withdrawals from, from the fire fund. So that, that red circle is the fire fund. Last year on this graph, it was hanging halfway out, halfway in. As Jennifer mentioned, from a, from a budgetary perspective, this fire fund will be fully depleted. Part of that $6 million includes capital. The fire engines that were authorized to be procured at last meeting are part of the budget. We have a two-year build on, on those fire engines and so the cash won't leave until, for two years. Until the cash leaves, it's going to show up in our budget. And so if they're not delivered in fiscal 26, it's also going to show up in the fiscal 27. When I say the fund's fully depleted from a budgetary perspective, there'll still be cash there because we didn't use that budget. We just needed the budget to procure it. Once the engines are delivered, then the cash goes out. And at that point in time, that'll, that'll wipe out the rest of the fire fund. And then our fourth funding source is our, is our backfill transfer. The reason that the costs are accounted for this way is to reflect the city council's prioritization of public safety. So we basically, we start with the public safety pie, the big blue pie. We make that whole. And then everything else that the city does uses the remainder. But the prioritization of public safety means we need to fill the blue pie first. We, we do, we fill it. You can see right now that, that $18 million transfer, this part of the general fund, it's a significant component of the general fund. But based on the prioritization, that's the reason that we accounted for it in this way. To prioritize public safety, make it whole, general fund deals with the rest. You can see all the different components. Part of that transfer represents revenues received in the general, all of the transfer, represents revenues received in the general fund, but spent in the public safety fund. And so when somebody asks me, hey, what are we going to spend measure S dollars on? And, and I give them an answer longer than a word or two. It's because of this. It's because the, the measure S money, property tax money, and sales tax money all hits the general fund. That's where it lands. It can be used for anything. What the city of Ucaipa uses its money on is public safety. So it's part of a transfer. And so what, what $18 million is, is that transfer? Is it the $6 million of measure S? Is it the $10 million of property tax? I would say yes, and we've got to have $2 million of something else too, to, to make the public safety fund whole. And so somebody else may say, no, it's not measure S. It's actually franchise fees that are landing in the general fund. But it's, it's, it's all in the general fund, but we're prioritizing the public safety fund, so it all goes there. So it, it kind of loses the, the color of the paint. It's kind of, it's in the general fund and it's backfilled. But the reason for the, the long-winded answer is, well, it depends what you want to call it. But the general fund is sending $18 million over to make the public safety fund whole. This is also included as attachment two. This is a snippet from our all-fund summary. This is included in the final budget as a key page of the final budget. This will show not only these columns, but it'll also show the beginning equity and the final equity columns as well. The, the key funds that I wanted to highlight here are the ones highlighted in green. And what you want to look at is that last column on the right, the net estimated change in fund balance. If you have a positive number there, that would represent a surplus. Brackets would represent a deficit. A zero represents balance. And so public safety fund and the general fund are two primary operating funds. You can see the inflows equal the outflows. That's a zero. That's a balanced budget. And as a modest win as it, as it is, it's a, it's a, it's a win. And so we're, we're excited about, about delivering on that, that objective tonight. We've been talking a lot about numbers, but I would like to take a quick step back. The, the numbers represent Jennifer's plan to implement city council's goals, but the next set of charts that follow, it's the staffing that's necessary to execute the plan. So this is starting with the city council and we'll work through these quickly. But this is the city council department in our, in our accounting system. Our city manager department in the general fund. Again, something to highlight is that it has absorbed the governmental affairs department this year. So this is the staffing that's in the general fund in fiscal 26, in the city manager general fund department. You can see that we've also highlighted some of the vacancies on these charts. And Jennifer would like to have her name called out one more time. Jennifer is right there, city manager. Slide 16 before an applause. It's been a while, but I'll take it. This is our public safety fund. So this is, this is the $31 million public safety fund. We have our two contracts. Cal Fire Sheriff. We have an accounting assistant. We have an accounting assistant. And then right down the middle, boom, that's code enforcement. So this is our org chart for the public safety fund. Public Works Department. The next few you'll see Fermine at the top of the list. This is our Public Works Department led up by Scott. This is our Parks, Streets and Park Rangers. And again, Scott's our deputy director of Public Works, oversees all these people. Couple more vacancies listed on that one. Engineering, there's Fermine again. This is led by our assistant city engineer, Landon, and all of our engineers listed there and our superstar Debbie. Community Development, we've got a contract with Charles Abbott for our building and safety. Of course, Ben is our city planner and deputy director. We've got a vacant director position. And we've got Ryan heads up our economic development. Economic development lives in community development. Megan does everything community services related. This is the full-time staff. Megan also deals with hundreds of part-timers to implement all the programming that community services does. But this is the full-timers associated with all of the different things that community services does. Our last slide of the chart puts all of these things in kind of a programming list, and you can see all the different things that community services does. Anna is our city clerk. General Services also has information technology in it. Another vacancy. And then our finance department, Ryan Blackerby holds together our finance department. And we are excited to announce that we have onboarded a HR risk manager. Sherry is onboard. She's been here about a week. And we're throwing her in the deep end and getting her updated very quickly. Couple more vacancies. This is the chart that I was alluding to. This is a programming kind of chart, and you can see all the different things that community services does. All development is right in here, finance, general services, public safety and mobile home out there. That's the way Ucaipa looks. Again, all of the dollars that you see in the general fund and the public safety fund are dollars. Those are all the humans that go along with the dollars. Jennifer mentioned that this task was not an easy lift. We couldn't do everything. We want to provide lots of services. We want to provide everything to the community, but budget constraints, financial constraints do not allow us to do so. This is attachment one in your packet. This is a list of the excluded programming. This is a heads up to city council to say, hey, if you were expecting these things to be programmed and funded in fiscal twenty-six, they are not. And so in order to make, to follow through on the objective of balancing the budget, all of these things were excluded. A couple of things to note here are down towards the bottom, that two plus million dollars of remaining deferred maintenance. We had a long list of known deferred maintenance. We know about it. We're going to get to it at some point. It's just every year it goes by and we don't get to it. Some of that has been incorporated and programmed into fiscal twenty-six. After what's been incorporated into fiscal twenty-six, there's another two point two that's on the list of stuff that we still couldn't fit into the twenty-six budget that's out there as known deferred maintenance. That's different than ongoing repairs and maintenance that we don't necessarily know about. Things break, we need to fix them. We also have that programmed into the fiscal twenty-six budget. This is a list of, hey, we know about it, we need to get to it, we just don't have the money to do it yet. The squad, the two point three million dollars, that paramedic squad, that's been on the list for several years. You guys that have been here a while probably are used to that one. Again, that's been, the fire chief has been mentioning that one for four or five years. And the city would like to get to the point of doing that. Budget constraints do not allow us to do that at this point in time, but that continues to be on this list. Five Winds Festival is not being programmed into October of twenty-five in next fiscal year. That's on that list. And then just to clarify, that Fourth of July event, that's a twenty-six event. So because the Fourth of July happens four days into the fiscal year, all of the costs are incurred in the previous fiscal year. So the one coming up, that event was funded in fiscal twenty-six and is on schedule to occur. So the one that's excluded is in thirteen months from now. That's the list of excluded programming. Between now and June ninth, we've got a lot to do. We're cranking through it. We're on track to get it done. But any direction provided by the city council tonight, we'll take that and incorporate that. We'll tighten up our estimates. We have some capital items to button up. We also need to finalize the build-out of the capital budgeting module and the digital budget book. And then ultimately, we have to compile our final documents and all the resolutions that go into the final budget document, that digital budget book. All of those things are on track. I did add this. We've seen this over the last year plus, almost two years now. I've been providing the trend. And so this is the one that you've seen historically. There's a typo there that I'll fix. That should say oh-three to twenty-five, not oh-five. But that's a twenty-year run, twenty-two-year run of what the trend looks like. And again, that shaded area on the right is budget information. Everything that's not shaded is actual information. But this is the one that we've been looking at. Now that we have our fiscal twenty-four financial statements issued and our draft fiscal twenty-six, we can roll this forward one year. And so rolling that forward, this is what the new chart looks like. So we did better than budget. So that shaded area here is now unshaded, and we did better than we thought. Fiscal twenty-five is still shaded as budget. And then fiscal twenty-six is flat. We are no longer decreasing, we're flat as a balanced budget, no longer decreasing. That decrease means there's a deficit going on. Flat means it's not. So that's our updated chart. Again, that's preliminary. That's not going to be, once we get to the ninth and we have a final adopted budget, we'll finalize that table, but that's the preview of what that looks like as of tonight. Again, the city manager, this is the city manager's budget. This budget is put together based on what city council says, we want to accomplish this. The city manager says, great, here's the budget to accomplish what you want to accomplish. So it's based on a set of directives. I am happy to report that those directives were successfully executed. The budget is balanced, the draft budget is balanced. And it was, it's not an easy lift to do that. And so I would like to also thank staff, all of the coordinators, the liaisons, the finance team that all are putting in all this effort and work to get this thing off the ground. It is staff's job to deliver a balanced budget. I get that, and that's what we should be doing. Again, the last few years, we haven't gotten there. And so this year, we are. I know that we should always be doing that. I agree. But this is the moment in time that we actually did it. And so I'm happy to report that. Also, I want to thank Jennifer for her leadership, her energy and her decision-making and keeping us on track and going back to, just making it really simple for us. Hey, this is where we need to get. And every single little decision along the way, she was energetic in saying, no, because that gets us further away from this, we're going this way. And so I really appreciate her leadership in that effort. And we are on track to deliver a balanced budget. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to receive direction or answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you, sir. Very well done. My colleagues, have any questions or comments?
No comment.
Good.
Thank you, Jennifer and Mr. White. Excellent job. I know you guys have worked really hard on this, and thanks for getting everybody together to come up with creative ways to meet our budget goals that we've asked you to do. And I expect June ninth to be a good meeting. I just had a couple of questions on the Schedule A we received from the Sheriff's Department. I know the salaries are total comp, and we're kind of waiting to hear what their negotiations are going to be. But the fixed costs on vehicles and equipment and all that, that's pretty much going to be flat, right, far as we know. But it could change. I don't know if we want to ask the captain. He won't know yet, or maybe he does know. But what we're waiting for is the total comp cost for the possible raise they're going to get there, they're negotiating, right?
Yes, sir.
And we're trying to factor in maybe ten percent. We don't know for sure, right?
Yeah, not to give away what we were, what our estimation was. We were, to start the budget process, we were coming up with a guesstimate, an educated guess on what that number could be. The number, the preliminary number provided was significantly less, but provided with the caveat of, hey, we have ongoing negotiations. The ongoing negotiations, I agree with you. I think you're on the right track that they impact salaries and that component of the Schedule A. So I think my understanding is, yes, you are correct.
Yeah, I've just got to be careful. I'm not negotiating the contract now. But I mean, it's, we won't get that news till probably the fall, I would say. We've probably got to come back at mid-year or something. But that's, you know.
Yeah, so we'll get it later. What we are trying to do is estimate, typically what we would do is say, hey, the Schedule A is the Schedule A, and that's our number, and we're going with it. Because we know of all the moving parts associated with the Schedule A, we are going to estimate in addition to the Schedule A so that we don't come back to you in the fall and say, hey, we knew that the estimate was wrong, but we took it anyways to balance our budget, and now we need more. We're going to try to guesstimate what the final number's going to be and balance our budget with that number.
Thank you. And one more question. I know we talked a little bit about the Stars Fund, and we moved that to a different category or basically separated it out. And that really is part of the governor's program, that that money is sent to the school districts, and then that is, we're reimbursed for some of that, right? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure. Yes, we are. So the school district receives grant funding. We administer the Stars Program, the after-school program for them. The funding for that program comes from the school district as it pass through, and then they pay the city to administer that fund. High level, that's a break-even for the city. And so the net impact to the general fund is a zero anyways. But when we're looking at individual revenues or individual costs in the general fund, it's important to keep in mind that two million dollars is not included in the general fund. And so the total costs are lower in the general fund because of that, and the revenues are lower in the general fund too. But yes, it is a break-even, and it's funding from the school district grant.
And I just want to compliment you guys for also identified, really after fiscal year twenty-six, to how important revenues are going to be. And you did put in the development context of what that's going to mean to our community in the future. Measure S is, it's good that the voters did help us with that, but that's not going to be the answer totally. The revenues are a key component of this, as you outlined, of where we go from here. So just good job to the staff, all of you guys, for putting your heads together. And there are some cuts we've made here, and more to come, I know. But thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
I think you all did a great job on this presentation as the entire agenda, but I just, I think this is good. And I want to point out to the public that, you know, there's a section here of six point two million dollars worth of things that aren't funded. Doesn't mean that they're not important, doesn't mean that we don't want them. It's just that we got to start somewhere. And at some point, maybe we have additional revenues and have some things come in that allow us to start doing some of these programs and some of these community events or services that we have on here. If we can start phasing them back in as we have a little more breathing room. But this doesn't mean that they're not important to us, but we had to start addressing some things. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'll also add the, all the numbers in there. One of Jennifer's directives, I don't remember the exact words, but it was, get rid of any fat that's in there. There's no fluff, there's nothing. One of the items of the bottom line is travel and meetings citywide. That's not luxury travel. That's staff training and things like that. Things that we would like to do to make sure that our staff is staying on top of what they're doing. However, when we're in a situation like we are, where we are trying to use every dollar to balance a budget and deliver as much service as we possibly can, the forty thousand dollars in estimated staff trainings, we have a staff of eighty people. And so, you know, forty thousand dollars isn't a ton of money, but that's the level of cutting that we were doing. There's zero fat in here. And that was, Jennifer was instrumental in making sure that all fat is, there wasn't a whole lot of fat. I'll tell you the truth, there's not a whole lot of fat in this budget, but there's zero. We're bone thin on everywhere in this budget.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Certainly, I think the mayor nailed it on this one. I would like to see at some point, let's get to a spot where we can bring these, some of these back. With that being said, I think we've done a good job of getting back to the basics of government, focusing on the priorities of public safety and what needs to be done to keep our city safe. We probably need to expand at some point our public safety relative to this excluded programming. I'm going to kind of call it a few. The fire protection and inspector vehicle, I think is something we should have an inspector in-house that we can, or with our contract. I know from, and I suspect that the public safety events booth materials is probably what we call swag, stickers, feel-good stuff. Kids love that. I mean, it really is a big thing in our community when they can run up to our deputies and ask for a star or a pencil or, you know, just, it used to be just say no. At some point, that is, law enforcement can be kind of a dull, not dull, not dull, a sort of looking for, kind of just sometimes depressing job. You see some horrible things, and every now and then you get to do something as small as giving a little kid a sticker, and it can really change your day. So if there's a way, one day, we can find our way back to getting that stuff back for our cops that are working hard. To include, and honestly, at that point, the four thousand dollar lineup for police volunteer uniforms. Probably if we were to say the amount of savings that those volunteers bring our city by doing the job that other people maybe don't want to do, or our deputies are busy doing other stuff. And I know it went a long way when I was able to have my uniform funded by the city. And while the Sheriff's Department certainly is a great organization, I've worked for that organization, and there are good contract cities to work for, and there are bad contract cities to work for. And it's not because of the Sheriff's Department, it's because of the city. And cities that look at the Sheriff's Department as, that is a them problem, they're not our employees, they work for the Sheriff's Department. No, that's not the way. We cannot look at our employees, our contracted employees that way. Those are our police officers. We used to bring them up here every time they got, we got a new one in the station, they're Ucaipa PD. We like them to, we, I know that even on the Ucaipa bulletin, we keep track of the ins and outs, right? This so-and-so deputy left. Man, when are they coming back? So hopefully, one day, we can get to a point where we can bring some of these back. And to the ones we maybe don't bring back, hopefully, maybe some community organizations step up and find a way to capitalize on making money off of what the city used to do. Some of these community services events, I'm certain, you know, Live Nation might be able to pick up five wins and run with it. It's not a city requirement. We require police department, fire department and safe roads. These luxuries are still really nice to have, but maybe somebody else can facilitate it in front of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to get it done. So good job. We'll be watching next year to see if we can get the budget better, have some more revenues and bring some of these back. I know Tree City USA was a big task I gave Dr. Wong with the Health of Ucaipa. I said, I want a Tree City USA designation. Trees are great, they're healthy, they make our air better. I want to be a Tree City USA. Dr. Wong, I know you're doing good work on that, the Health of Ucaipa Committee. Let's bring that back. Let's get a Tree City USA designation soon. Thank you.
If I could, some of the things that you're mentioning, we are entering into a strategic planning process. Some of those are, I would not say that they're big-ticket items. They're, and that's the level of cutting that we did. But some of the big-ticket items, those are great candidates to say, hey, Ucaipa, how, what is our strategy to fund these things? You mentioned a fire inspector vehicle. The way that we do fire inspections is probably not optimal at the current time. There's probably a better way, and it would require some staffing. But if we look at this as a big picture, not necessarily item by item, but look at overall program and service delivery, there's probably a better way when we look at it from a strategic planning, high level, to do exactly what you're suggesting.
Kind of runs in the...
Kind of runs in the realm of saving twenty-five thousand bucks on a, uh, a certain issue that we're going through. So, everything helps, right?
Anything else?
Yes, um, this two million, three hundred thousand for the paramedic services, I really hope that at some point we can, uh, establish that. Living in a mobile home park, we see fire trucks, ambulance come in weekly, you know, and all the personnel and everything, where if we had just one simple vehicle that we could, could handle that. We just ordered two new fire trucks, and they're gonna be out there doing that type of work too. So, that's very important and something that I think we really need to strive for.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a significant change in, um, uh, service delivery. And I, I think that the strategic plan is, is an excellent opportunity that, um, as, as we were spending the last year out and about in the community, um, what you just said is, was repeated several times to say, hey, we, we like the fire guys, we like to see them roll in, but, but we, we probably don't need an entire engine and everybody on it. We probably just need a squad.
Right.
And so, um, uh, those big delivery, uh, changes in, in, in delivery of service, um, uh, the, the next few months in that strategic planning process is, is instrumental in making those types of changes.
Yeah, just one final thing for Jennifer. Uh, I, I think we're also repurposing the Government Affairs Unit. That's under your wing now. We're re-looking in how we're gonna do that in the future. Um, I know we didn't put it on the list, but I know you're working on that right now.
Um, yeah, Joe Perdetto, uh, will be resigning from the City of Ucaipa, his last days, the end of June. Um, and some of the expenses that he added in his budget got pulled to the city manager, but, so, but we've, uh, eliminated the department.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this?
No public comments.
Thank you. Well, do we have a motion for staff on this item?
I'd just have, I'd make a motion to stay the course. I think that was one of the options.
Okay. Do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you vote?
I did. I voted affirmative.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, I was, I was looking at you.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Good, sir.
Um, before we move on to the next item, is there an appetite to have the public hearing first so that those folks who are here for that public hearing can have their comments heard before we move on to item twenty-one?
So, the public hearing, item twenty-two, is that you're referring to?
Twenty-four.
Is being moved.
Twenty-four, I believe. Public hearing on staffing vacancies.
I don't have a problem moving that. Does council have an issue moving that forward?
We, Mayor, we don't have any, um, public comments for anything other than item number twenty-one.
Uh, let me rephrase. Is there any, um, any, anybody other than city staff presenting on item twenty-four? Okay, I apologize. I was having an impression. Okay.
All good?
Withdraw.
Okay. All right, so that moves us on to item number twenty-one.
Thank you, and good evening again, Mayor and council members. Uh, this item, this item is, uh, regarding the freeway corridor specific plan update. And, um, before we begin, I just wanted to point out that the purpose of, uh, tonight's discussion is for the city council to provide direction on the path forward. Um, tonight, the city council is not being asked to provide a final vote to approve warehouses or even to, or even a final, final vote to approve rezoning, um, of properties to allow for warehouses or any other type of development. Uh, what we are, uh, doing here today, uh, what staff's job is for today is to provide the, uh, the technical facts and the, the statistical information so that the city council can make a decision based on that information, uh, and move forward. Uh, for this item, uh, a full presentation of the five options was provided to the city council and the public at the last city council meeting. Uh, uh, tonight, we'll, I'll provide a summarized presentation of those five, um, options for city council's consideration. And, um, I'll refer back to the, the chart or the table that is on the screen right now as we go through the different options. But, uh, before I go any further, I did want to address one of the questions that came up during public comment regarding the planning commission's review, or possible review of these options. And I wanted to point out that for the five options that are, um, that are listed on the table or that you will be considering tonight, per the city's municipal code, uh, the planning commission review would only be required for options four and five if we were to, uh, move forward in that direction, or in, in the direction of four, or option four or five. Um, I'll go over, uh, some of the details of option four that were provided by one of the property owners, uh, uh, here shortly. Um, that property owner, uh, is, uh, the Robinson. As you're aware, they own the majority of the land in the freeway corridor area. Um, I do believe that their representative is here tonight, uh, to provide additional information, uh, regarding that option. Um, four, and also, uh, I wanted to point out, four of the five options that are being presented, uh, tonight allow for warehouse-type developments. I mention that because there was a lot of discussion rela-, um, and a lot of comments, uh, uh, really regarding the warehouse-type developments. Um, option five, which is at the bottom of the table, is the only option that prohibits any warehouse-type land uses in the freeway corridor area. And as I mentioned, it, it's the only option that does not allow warehouses. You know, based on the numbers and also the, uh, current economic market data, um, and also the modern way that people choose to shop, and more importantly, for Ucaipa residents, the city's financial future, um, option five is not being recommended by staff. Um, uh, it would be, um, it might be a stretch saying this, but it might be even irresponsible for city staff to recommend option five uh, because the numbers and the facts just don't support it. And right now, um, it doesn't support the city's future financial sustainability. You saw one of the graphics in the draft, uh, budget presentation earlier tonight, uh, for the, uh, uh, one of the graphs show that flat line that we talked about. You know, economic development and, uh, generating sales tax and additional property tax is one of the, the, uh, the tools or the revenue sources that's required to get that line to go, uh, uh, in the positive dire-, or up direction again. And what's unique, um, you know, there was some discussion, uh, last meeting regarding option three, which is, uh, which is the option that includes a, uh, project, the warehouse project, the Pacific Industrial Project. Um, you know, when you have a proposed project in front of you like that, um, that is willing to pay, um, over thirty-eight million dollars or invest over thirty-eight million dollars for the public infrastructure, which is, uh, includes the roads, road widening, and utilities. Um, you know, that's the, the type of investment, investment that will pave the way for that econom-, economic development and, and those, uh, um, revenue-generating opportunities for the city. The, the freeway corridor area, as you're aware, you know, it, it includes areas or properties on both sides of the freeway, north and south side of the freeway near, um, uh, Oakland Road. Um, this area was identified in the, uh, it is identified in, in the city's nineteen ninety-two general plan. It was identified in the nineteen ninety-two general plan as a commercial development hub for, uh, the sales tax revenue and economic, economic development in Ucaipa. And even before incorporation, that area, uh, was always, uh, identified in the county's land use plan as, um, as an area for potential commercial use, um, uh, moving forward. And that, that goes back to the nineteen sixties, um, uh, some, you know, county land use plan. Um, uh, many of you have, will recall or, or have read about, uh, what happened in, in the year two thousand, and that was when the city's, um, planning commission and city council approved a commercial development project within the freeway corridor specific plan area adjacent to the ten freeway. That commercial project was a, uh, Home Depot and Walmart project that, that was approved by the, the city, city council and planning commission. Um, you know, you, you type, uh, residents did question the approval of that project, which led to a ballot measure, a referendum that was included in the election that year. Um, that referendum was approved by the majority of the voters, and, um, the commercial project's approval was denied. And, you know, that, what that meant is that that commercial project, that Walmart and Home Depot would not be, uh, built in Ucaipa. And, you know, since then, these big back, big sales tax generating retailers, um, they've opened a couple other stores in our neighboring cities and been, have been providing that sales tax revenue for those cities, uh, you know, specifically Redlands and, the City of Redlands and Beaumont. Um, you know, what's unique is that while the denial of, uh, those projects did preserve the city's, uh, rural nature, um, the one, um, what the number shows that, that the setback was that it, it negatively affected the city's economic development opportunities for that area, and also, um, you know, the related sales tax generation opportunities. Um, it also stalled the, the development in the freeway corridor area for many reasons. Uh, you know, that was in, in the early two thousands. Then in, in two thousand and seven, um, you know, city staff and the city council realized this negative impact and then, um, set the wheels in motion to address it and move towards, uh, essentially facilitating economic development in, in that area and, uh, facilitating economic development opportunities near the freeway. So, um, you know, what did the city council do at that time? Well, uh, what did they do to create the sales tax revenue generation opportunities, uh, to be able to pay for the services that, that, uh, residents expect? You know, you, you saw in the previous item, the cost of public safety, the cost of community services, the cost of these events that people enjoy, and also for public infrastructure. Well, um, at, in two thousand and seven, um, the city council, uh, uh, made a choice to invest, um, almost three hundred thousand dollars from the city's general fund to complete the environmental impact report work or the EIR work, um, the environmental review and the planning, planning entitlement work that the private property owners would normally have to pay for, uh, to pay for themselves to develop in the freeway corridor area. And that, um, effort is what led to the original, I'll call it the original, uh, freeway corridor, uh, specific plan that was adopted in two thousand and eight by the city council. Um, the preparation of that original plan in two thousand and eight was an open process, and it did include, um, input from, from the property owners that own property within that area, as well as, uh, uh, the public and the various committees and, and the many meetings that we, that were had back then to, to put together this plan that was adopted by the city council. You know, and I, I think we have to keep in mind that by the city spending these thousands of dollars, thousands of general fund dollars, it did save the property owners a lot of money that they would have to pay for the environmental review work that was required to develop their property. And by adopting this plan, you know, it did pave the way for, uh, the city to, to be able to pay for, well, it created the revenue generating opportunities for the city to be able to, to pay for these services that we've been talking about here tonight. Um, um, you know, unfortunately, after the plan was adopted in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, we had the economic downturn and that recession, um, and that, you know, further stalled the commercial development of the freeway corridor area. Um, and since then, you know, the costs for services have continued to increase, and the need for this economic development and sales tax, uh, revenue generation for Ucaipa, it becomes more important, and it's become more of a, a priority. You know, so, so, uh, we move forward to two thousand and sixteen. At that time, the city council, um, uh, adopted, uh, or they approved, uh, an update to the general plan. Um, the general plan had not been updated for, um, over twenty years, I believe, uh, before that point. And what that plan included is, um, well, what, what that update to the plan included is it, it created more policies and provided a direction for the freeway corridor specific plan development, as well as many other, uh, as well as facilitating many other developments, um, uh, in the city. Uh, following the, uh, approval of that plan, the city council began to have discussions in two thousand and seventeen to, uh, you know, to consider updating the plan that was adopted in two thousand and eight, uh, because of the changing market, market conditions. And also, um, what I, more importantly, I believe, is the many changes, uh, that came, that became law after two thousand and eight related to the environmental review and permitting that was being required for the development of these vacant properties, and more specifically, the, the properties that include the, you know, natural canyons and the drainage, uh, the drainage courses. The adopted two thousand and eight plan, it, it realized that there were n- natural drainage courses in those areas. And if you look at the map, which I'll, I'll bring up here shortly, um, the areas that are, there are areas that are actually FEMA-designated floodplains and natural drainage courts, courses that were designated, or that are currently designated because the plan is still in effect, that are designated as commercial or even residential uses. And that's one of the, one of the reasons why city council, uh, um, approved moving forward with an update is to be able to address, address those, those situations. The city did, uh, obtain some grant funding in two thousand and twenty-one, which, uh, essentially kick-started the process to update the specific plan. Um, you know, that grant funding only paid for a portion of the cost of the plan, uh, or the, of the update of the plan. Uh, the total cost to update that plan, uh, was, was an, uh, an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and one of the things that, uh, city council elected to do this time was that rather than, rather than, uh, using general fund money to pay for it, we, the plan is to use general fund money upfront to pay for it, but then that money would be reimbursed by the developers as they develop the property. So, that's different than what happened in the two thousand and eight plan, where the city invested the, the general fund money to create that plan. So, uh, as part of the, uh, the preparation of the update, uh, you know, going back to two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, there were several study sessions and other public meetings that were held to gain input on the direction, uh, for the update. Um, some of the, the direction that was provided was to provide more flexibility for the open space, uh, requirements, uh, you know, while allowing, uh, while keeping, maintaining those view, those views and that rural appearance. Um, as you can see on this slide, uh, some of the other, uh, bullet points of direction that was given, uh, you know, to preserve the views of the ridge lines, um, and as I mentioned earlier, to distinguish the difference between that functional open space and those other natural environmental mitigation areas, which were those drainage courses or those areas that are actually FEMA-designated floodplains. And, um, you know, as you're, uh, aware, development within those FEMA floodplains is, if, if it's not impo-, uh, expensive, it's impossible because you have to go through many hurdles and, and pay a lot of money and infrastructure to remove those areas from the FEMA floodplain. Uh, some more direction that was provided was to manage the, the traffic impacts, uh, and also to, um, since the current adopted plan allows for warehouses, the idea was to hide the warehouses from the freeway and the, and other public streets. And that, you know, that update process was a three-year process from September of twenty-one to September of two thousand and twenty-four. It did include input from the city council, um, residents, property owners within the plan area. And as part of that process, there was, uh, many, there were many entities, uh, many agencies that were notified of the update. Some of them provided feedback, others did not, but, uh, here's a list of all of the entities, entities that were notified. Um, many of them are related to the environmental review and the environmental permitting that, that is required, um, for the update. You know, and all that work led us to the September twenty-third, um, city council public hearing, where the city council, uh, uh, reviewed the results of, of that effort. Um, at that meeting, uh, you know, there was a majority of the property owners and stakeholders that provided, uh, support for, for the plan that was presented at the time, uh, with some, um, minor revisions, uh, which were included in that, uh, errata sheet. You've heard that, you heard that term, um, over the last, well, since September. Um, that, the, the plan that was presented was, included some changes that were presented by the property owners in that errata sheet. Um, there was one property owner who, who spoke in opposition of that updated plan back in September of, of two thousand and thirteen. And then at, at that meeting, city council did table that item. And, um, you know, there was a lot of discussion that was, um, had in that meeting in September. So we went back and to make sure that we accurately reflected and... Accurately reflected in, in the direction that the city council provided, so what you see on this slide is, are the. The seven items or seven bullet points that include the direction that the city council provided. And, and next to those in red, you'll see the ones that have been accomplished. And those that we have not accomplished yet because we're, those will be accomplished once we receive direction. From the city council tonight on, on the options. You know, I've mentioned the economic development and the, the sales tax and revenue generating opportunities, this. Is a screenshot of a page of our current year's budget, which shows the citywide revenue by source. I wanted to point out that, you know, that red piece of the pie is the sales and the use tax component. That is a, out of the overall pie, that is a smaller piece of the pie. I think the, the city's priority is to get that red piece of the pie a little bigger and as I mentioned earlier, to get that trajectory in that graph that you saw early. Pointing in the right direction. So, direction on path and the options. Here are the five options that you saw at the last city council meeting, I'll go through these real quick, at least as quickly as I can. Option one is to keep the existing specific plan. And this is the map for the existing specific plan, as you can see, the, the red area is the regional commercial land use and the purple or pink is a business park. Do you want to point out that the, the warehouse type uses are currently allowed in the adopted plan within the red and the purple area? The red area down at the bottom right is the area over near County Line Road where the. The Brookfield Warehouse was approved last year and it's been, or maybe, maybe it was longer than last year, but it's currently being constructed. So I, I mentioned that just to show that that warehouse project was processed through the planning commission. And, and ultimately the city council and it met all the criteria for. For it to be approved because that warehouse use is allowed in the red and the purple areas in the current plan. In, in the current plan, you'll notice that the, there's the lighter green areas. That is the, the opens, what was. Characterized as open space in the two thousand and eight plan. Based on, on the environmental impact report from two thousand and eight, in this current plan. Development is not allowed in that light green area because it, because it is designated as open space, I want to make sure that I, I point that out. And then you, you don't see the drainage areas here, but there's a lot of natural drainage courses that run through that, not only the green area, but also the red. The red and portion of the purple area too. I mentioned I was gonna be referring back to this table after we review the options that, so for option one. The various columns there have different criteria, I'll just go from left to right. The first column is the sequoia cost to the city with option one. The, the cost to the general fund for the work that is, that has occurred today would, would be that seven, the seven hundred and fifty thousand. Essentially, we've already gone through the process to, of going through the update or to update the plan, we've already essentially spent that money to get to this point. And if, if a, a plan. If, if option two or three are not selected, then we lose the opportunity for the developers to be able to reimburse the city. Because there won't be any development, so the city, so the city would have to essentially write off the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was spent from the general fund as part of this option. The second column is the fiscal outcome or the, the, the potential sales tax revenue generation. As you can see for, with option one, we've categorized that as low. The visibility of warehouses by the public, I think that's pretty straightforward because warehouses are allowed in the red and purple area, the visibility would be very high. The open space area is moderate, you saw a lot of the green area on that map. For the housing opportunities and how it ties into the housing element. This is characterized as poor because the city will, with option one, the city will need to add approximately thirteen hundred residential affordable. Units elsewhere in future housing elements. And then some of the key issues related to option one is the high cost of infrastructure, as I mentioned, the drainage infrastructure that would be required if you're developing. In the, the drainage courses and also the, some of the mitigation costs. Because with the current plan, a developer would have to go through. Through their own separate environmental review process to develop within the drainage courses, they wouldn't be covered by the E I R that was done in two thousand and eight for this plan. And option one does not allow the pumpkin patch. I know the pumpkin patch has a conditional use permit that allows them to operate during their season, which is September through December. And the current plan does not allow the pumpkin patch to operate outside of the, the conditional use permit. And the, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to the pumpkin patch later on another option, but. Again, moving on to option two, this is the, the map or the plan that was presented to the city council in September. And. In that September plan, you know, you see there's a difference between the light green area and the dark green area. One of the things that, that you see here is in that dark green area is the areas where those natural drainage courses are. And the environmental studies that were completed for this effort determined that it would be very. Expensive to develop within those natural drainage courses, so if they, if you identify those as open space conservation. Then that would open the door to be able to mitigate for the other impacts that would occur in, throughout the, the rest of the plan. So. Again, the, the dark green kind of correlates with the FEMA flood plain map, you saw the FEMA flood plain map in one of the previous items. And as, as I mentioned, that would, it would be very difficult to develop in those areas. The light green is categorized as open space, but this light green open space is different than the one you see on the current plan in that. You're able to do some, to, you're able to disturb that area to a certain extent. For example, to create a slope for a building pad or something like that, the difference there is that with the current plan, you're not able to touch the light green area. In this plan, there's flexibility but built in, I know one of the property owners had a comment that. That there was too much open space being required in this plan as well as option three. And their comment was that the city's development code already requires them to. To dedicate forty to sixty percent of the property for open space. And I wanted to point out that that, that open spaces, it, it includes this open space, but the forty to sixty percent requirement is more of a water quality related item. It, it also, you know, we have our, our development code that requires a certain amount of landscaping. And we have our, the water quality management plan requirements that require the, the rain water or salt water enough to be treated, so that, that, that's why we have those other. And I won't call them open space requirements, I'll just call them, you know, undevelopable, you can't put a building on, you have to use it for landscaping or for water treatment purposes. And so going back to the option two plan, the. The, this option two, it did include, when, when city council reviewed in September, it did include the, the warehouse project, the Pacific Industrial Warehouse. Project which is located in those, those, those two pink or purple areas right in the middle of the screen. And as you can see on this one, the other purple areas that would allow these warehouse type uses are kind of tucked away, they're kind of hidden. Away from the freeway and other public, public streets. So again, going back to this table for option two. You can see that the sequel costs are pretty low, zero to thirty thousand primarily because the, as. The plan develops, the developers would reimburse the city for the seven hundred and fifty thousand that, that we, we spent from the general fund to complete the work. The fiscal outcome, sales tax revenue opportunity is, is good because of the, the regional commercial areas and the warehouse areas. The visibility of the warehouses is low because the warehouses are tucked away. Open space area is high because we have the, both the, the dark green and lighter green colors for open space. And then the housing opportunities are great because the plan does include housing, land use or zoning for housing in different densities throughout the plan area. The key issues for this one, one property owner opposes this plan, as I mentioned earlier, they, they spoke at the September meeting. This option two does reduce the traffic impacts because you are replacing the, the, some of the. Commercial land use area with the business park area which generates less traffic. It, it does include the, the warehouse project, the Pacific Industrial Warehouse project as part of the plan approval. And overall, there's a reduction of the commercial zone area. And again, that's because of the business park or the, the business park land use that is being created. And then option three, this is essentially a, it's a revised version of option two and the reason I say that it's revised is because it's. In September, when city council reviewed the plan for option two, there, since then. Some of the direction that was given is to allow the property, the city's, city staff more time to work with the property owners and the public on, on this process. So what we've done is we've gained, we, we've taken a lot of the input from the property owners and the public that has been provided over, over the last, well, from September to March. And we were able to modify this plan to the extent that we would not have to recirculate the whole E I R process again and spend another. Seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred thousand dollars to go through that process again, so we're able to accommodate a few of those changes, but this is going to require. Some additional technical studies and environmental review work. Which would cost the city an additional fifty thousand. But again, we would not have to recirculate the entire E I R and go through that process again, which may take a, a year or two to complete. For option three, I'll just go through some of the pros and cons, as I mentioned earlier, the traffic impacts are less. The, the Pacific Oak Warehouse project that's included, they would. If approved, they, and they move forward, they would have to pay the development impact fees that are associated with that project. And that would expedite the repayment of the loan from the general fund to the development impact fee program. There's also other, other, you know, property tax. Revenue generate, generating opportunities associated with that. Sixty of the general plan policies that were included in the two thousand and sixteen update are supported by this direction. And I think it's important to mention that there's no additional long term cost to the general fund with option three. Another, some additional pros, here's on the map, you see the area just the north of the ten freeway and east of Oakland Road, which is owned by. The Robinson family, this option three does increase the commercial land or, or the commercial land use area on the Robinson property. One of the things that, that the Robinsons have, have been wanting to do that is included in agreement with the city of Ucaipa is to realign Calamaisa Boulevard, which you. See by that dash line on the screen, so this option provides for that realignment. And one of the pros, as I mentioned earlier, is that this warehouse project, it pays for the public infrastructure to essentially kickstart the development of the freeway corridor specific plan area. Some of the cons associated with option three, there is a lot of public opposition. Some residents have concerns with the warehouse land use or some residents would prefer that the freeway corridor. Area not be developed at all. There are, there are a couple, the majority of, of the, the majority property owner, the person that owns the majority of the property does oppose this option, however. According, based on this option, they do gain a few things, you know, they do gain an additional six hundred and twenty housing units on their property. The, their commercial land use area is increased by a hundred and fifty percent. Which provides a capacity of about one point one million square feet of commercial. Land use, which is the equivalent to the Victoria Gardens and, and Ranch Cucamonga. And as I mentioned earlier, this does require an additional fifty thousand investment from the general fund. To complete some of the additional environmental studies that are required for this option. And so for option three, you could see the, how it ranks with the different criteria. Again, focusing on the key issues on the right hand side, as I mentioned, one property does, one property owner does oppose this option. As I mentioned, it does include the additional input from several property owners that we, that we received since September of last year, the reduced traffic impacts, it includes the warehouse project and. And there is, it does increase the commercial land use area when you compare it to option two. Option four, now this is an option that you saw at the last city council meeting. It's an option that was presented by a property owner, the Robinson, and in fact, the information that they provided to the city back in February, they provided two options to city staff at that time. At the last city council meeting, we presented this option. And the details for this option here, those yellow arrows are pointing to the Robinson owned properties within the freeway quarter specific plan area. So as I mentioned, in the information they provided us in February, they, they provide us this option and this option. The reason why we, city staff touched on this option at the last meeting, but we didn't, we, we didn't get into the details here because we also received a letter from the proper. Property owner indicating to city staff that they preferred the previous option, not this option here. So for that reason is why we focused on the first plan, not this one, but, and. I did speak with the property owner's representative today and I believe that they're, they will speak during public comment to provide some additional information on, on this option here. But, but I'll just touch on, on a few highlights. The, the. Land use for the properties that are not owned, for the majority of the properties that are, that are not owned by the Robinsons are the same as option three. However, the areas that are, that are being pointed out by the yellow arrows are, are the Robinson owned property, so, so those are a little different. You can see, you know, the dark red is the commercial zone areas. Purple or the pink is the, the business park that allows for the warehouse uses. And then the yellow is for the residential areas and I, I do have to point out that the yellow residential areas on this. Plan are more higher density residential units as opposed to the option three plan. And also, the, the dark green, which is the open space conservation, this is the area that I spoke about that is within the natural drainage courses. They do show some dark green on the bottom left, which is up on the slopes in the hillsides where there, there aren't any drainage courses, so. It wouldn't be appropriate for that area to be labeled as dark green open space because there aren't any drainage courses or any riparian areas that would. Be considered eligible for mitigation type uses. And as I mentioned, the, the property owner's representative, property owner's representative may, may touch on some more highlights related to this plan. I'll go through, through some of the pros related to option four, the plan that's being proposed by the Robinsons. You know, it does have that greater mix of housing density compared to the other version of option four. The fiscal outcome is moderate because of the commercial and business park areas that, land use areas that are being proposed. And another pro would be that the property owner, the largest property holding in the area may be satisfied since they are the ones who are proposing or the representative is proposing this plan. Some of the, the cons. You know, I've, I've been mentioning the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost for the city, you know, if we were to go with the option four. Then we wouldn't have that mechanism for the developers to reimburse the city for the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we've already spent, so that would be a, a significant expense. So that would be a, a significant expense for the city. And also, with this option, the future cost for the, for the developers will be high because they are, for various reasons. The infrastructure would be high because they're showing potential development in these drainage courses. So the infrastructure cost and also the environmental mitigation cost would be high. And again, they would, it would require another, a million dollars plus to go through another EIR effort for this updated plan because we wouldn't just be, we, we would have to recirculate another EIR to go with this option. And also, related to that is a timeline for that development. Because we would have to recirculate the EIR, that means another 18 months, possibly two years, to be able to go through that process. And I believe it would be, based on our experience of infrastructure projects and drainage areas, it takes up to two to three years just to get, even longer to get the environmental permitting to even start moving dirt within these areas. And I do have to point out some of the cons associated with this option that are on the list here, and primarily because they are, they, they sway from the direction that the city council gave us in 2001 and 2000, or 2021 and 2022. You know, the rural character and open space would be lost. The general plan goals and policies will require revision. Habitat and wildlife movement is negatively impacted. That was one of the things that was reviewed significantly as part of the EIR process for the, the options two and three. Cal Mesa would likely need to approve a truck route on County Line Road because the option four plan shows business park or warehouses near County Line Road, which means that they would gain access off of the, to the freeway off of County Line Road, and Cal Mesa would have to make some changes to be able to accommodate that. The traffic impacts would, would be increased compared to all the other options. And I mentioned some of the other items on this list previously. And as part of this option, they, they, option four does propose a land use change in the area where we plan to construct the Wildwood Interchange in the future. And, and that's important because in options two and three, or as we went through the process of updating the plan, we were very careful that we did not change any of the land use for the properties that are within the footprint of the future Wildwood Interchange. And that's important because we start to get into some legal issues with inverse condemnation. You know, if, if we were to, we know that there's a project there that Caltrans and SBCTA is working on with the city on. We know that at some point down the road, we're going to have to approach the property owners to acquire a right of way from the interchange. So if we change the land use today, if we upzone it or downzone it, we can, you know, you can affect the value of the property, either increase it or decrease it. And if, if we decrease it, then that's where the inverse condemnation issues come into play. If we, if we upzone it, then that means that we're intentionally making the property more expensive, so taxpayers will have to pay more for the right of way in the future for the Wildwood Interchange. So there's some legal issue, legal reasons why we have not, we, options two and three are not proposing any changes to the land use within the Wildwood Interchange footprint area. And going back to the table here on option four, you can see the, how the, this option ranks in the various categories. And I'll point out some of the key issues on the right-hand side, you know, the significant additional CQ review costs, because you would have to essentially redo the EIR, the cost of the environmental review, environmental permits, and also the significant cost to the environmental mitigation and the infrastructure that would be required to develop in those drainage areas. And I'll, I'll touch on option five real quick. This is the option to proceed with the freeway corridor specific plan concept without any of the warehouse uses. There are two potential paths for this option. One is to amend the existing plan to prohibit warehouses, and the other path is to amend options two or three and remove any of the business park areas where the Pacific Oak Warehouse Project is proposed and, and replace it with, with housing. Or you could replace it with commercial land uses, but there are some, you know, the, there are, based on some of the research that we have done, and Ben Matlock, I'll touch on some of that here shortly, you know, on there. We don't want to over, if we oversaturate the area with commercial land use and it doesn't happen, then there might be some ramifications with that. So with option five, again, going back to the table, the, here, you could see how it ranks with the different criteria. You'll see the dark green in the middle, the visibility, visibility of the warehouse by the public, obviously that ranks, you know, there is none because there wouldn't be any warehouses with this option. And on this next slide is just a side-by-side comparison of option three and option four. And before we go any further, I, I did want to point out that on the, the staff report for this item tonight, staff is recommending option three, so that, that's why I, it's highlighted on this slide here. And with option three, as I mentioned, there was a warehouse project that is included in that option. And there were, the, the warehouse project developer, the applicant, did provide some, a video and also some renderings of what it would look like, what the warehouse, houses would look like. This is a view looking northeast from essentially the Redlands area. And you can see the Live Oak Interchange over here on the left, the Pumpkin Patch here. This is Live Oak, this is that dip in the road as you travel, as you leave the City of Ucaipa, and this is Live Oak Canyon Road. And this here is the new road from Live Oak Canyon Road that would, that would go, lead to where the warehouses are, and the warehouses are behind these, these hills here. Here's another view from the freeway. This is the Pumpkin Patch area and the hills here, so the warehouses are behind that hill. Another view going up that new road, as you get up that road, you can see the driveway or the, the entrance to the warehouse project site. And then this one, I think, is, is important to show because this is a view, if you were standing on the Oakland Road, Live Oak Canyon Road Bridge about, over the freeway, if you were standing, not on that bridge, but 385 feet above that bridge. If you're down on the bridge, you won't be able to see the warehouses, you'll see that other view that we saw earlier, but if you're 385 feet above, that's what you would see. And just for perspective, 380 feet above that bridge is essentially the elevation of City Hall. So if there were no trees in the way, no clouds from City Hall, this is what, what you would be able to see. I, excuse me, I did see some, I did speak to some residents that live along Colorado Street that were concerned about the view. Colorado Street is essentially half, it's half of the 385, so it's about 180, close to 200 feet, depending on where you are on Colorado Street. So on Colorado Street, you would still be able, you wouldn't see the sides of the warehouse, but I believe you would still be able to see the, the white rooftops along with all the other development that is slated to occur in, in Cal Mesa over here on the left. And I just wanted to point that out for perspective. This is, again, this is 380 feet, 385 feet above the bridge, and it's essentially the elevation of City Hall. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ben Matlock, he, to provide some information on the, the, the trend of the commercial development and also some of the projects that are occurring in Cal Mesa.
Yeah, thank you all, Mayor, and city council members. As part of the freeway corridor specific plan update, we did utilize kind of a lot of market research to help facilitate the review and kind of build out some of the expectations of the area. So we did have a market analysis done as part of the initial freeway corridor specific plan kind of update process, and then also a lot of input through commercial brokers and developers that build some of these regional centers to really understand where the market is and where it's going and better plan or right-size the, the commercial land for where the market will be. And certainly, as we've seen trends, the commercial land in the area has diminished as online shopping has grown. So a number of the traditional brick and mortar facilities and bid bots retailers have consolidated over the past, you know, decade as they've kind of moved to more of a online model. And so, as we kind of look at it, City of Ucaipa, we sit in between kind of two existing regional commercial hubs, which includes Redlands, primarily focused within the Donut Hole of San Bernardino County, which is the Citrus Plaza and Mountain Grove Shopping Centers, and then Beaumont itself. And so in speaking with a number of these different kind of knowledgeable commercial brokers that work with a lot of these big name brand tenants, they really identify that there's probably a spot between the two that can facilitate another center, but not necessarily multiple. And so when you look at the regional context of where we are at, this shows Ucaipa or the freeway corridor specific plan update, and then these are two different specific plans within the city of Cal Mesa. And so Cal Mesa currently has two specific plans that are adopted. They have the Summer Wind specific plan that has had some construction but had stalled out due to some issues with, through construction and the, the developer, but that has since been kind of resolved, and so a new developer probably will be taking over and moving that forward soon. And then the Mesa Verde specific plan, that also has some regional shopping planned here as well. If you look at how kind of the market has shifted, the summer or Mesa Verde specific plan, they have essentially got rid of all of that. And their updated plan that is, that is being proposed in the city of Cal Mesa has removed all that regional commercial that they had originally envisioned in lieu of, of warehouse because they recognize that either this project or our project in the City of Ucaipa will be the ones that get built, there's no need for them to also batfield this spot. And so really, it becomes a question of, one of these two are going to be the retail hub between the existing centers that are in the area. And so realistically, you know, the Mesa Verde specific plan, they really have changed a lot of it, and so they're really going much more in the industrial front in terms of their plan. And so as part of looking out into the horizon from, let's say, Colorado, the residents there will be able to see that development that's transpiring there based on the elevation change. But then two, really, when we're looking at Summer Wind and kind of the competition that we have as a community, one of these sites are going to be the regional shopping center. This had been kind of played with a number of issues and had stalled out, which means that we have some time to essentially jump the race and catch up to the one that was ahead of us. And so we really tried to focus on making a specific plan that would be competitive, that could help essentially make Ucaipa the winner and bring that sales tax revenue to the city into discussion. Certainly, one of the challenges that the plan area has had and historically has had is infrastructure challenges. And so even when we've tried to bring big name tenants to Ucaipa, you know, the cost of infrastructure to bring water and sewer and other utilities down to work and connect, infrastructure was the number one cause that caused those projects to go is, they'd go, hey, we're not going to pay for this. Property owner, you don't pay for this? No, the city, can you do it? Well, we don't have the funds to do it. And so that's really where kind of the idea then focuses on is, okay, leveraging other development projects to essentially pay for that infrastructure. So then that way, the sales tax revenue generating uses are able to come in through without requiring the city to upfront cash it does not have for that infrastructure to bring those sales tax generating uses. And so, and then these are the four kind of different options. The existing specific plan, the September one, the March updated version, which is an enhancement of this one with feedback from all of the different property owners. And then this is the alternative number four from the applicant's representative for Robinson.
Thank you, Ben. And I also wanted to mention that, you know, with, with option three, we did, we did speak to all the property owners within the freeway corridor specific plan area. And, you know, there are still, I, I mentioned the Wildwood Interchange earlier. You know, that is a separate project from this process, even though that that footprint is within the freeway corridor area. But we, for the reasons I stated earlier, we, we're keeping, we're leaving the land use alone, that's, it's the project, the Wildwood Interchange project, project is separate. And we did receive some feedback from South Mountain Water Company, who is, you know, the majority shareholder of that is Ucaup Valley Water District. We did receive some feedback from their staff indicating some of their concerns. And so, you know, many of those concerns were tied to the, the property that may be required for the Wildwood Interchange in the future, the property that they own. We do have some hurdles still to, to get through with the discussions with respect to that with them. And, but obviously, you know, they are a property owner within the freeway corridor area, so, so we, we made sure that, that we explained to them this option and what that, what that means. Again, they did express some concerns, but those are concerns we'll have to work through as we move forward with the Wildwood Interchange project itself. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. The recommendations for this item are listed on page 326 of the report. As I mentioned earlier, that staff is recommending, recommending the option three as it relates to the five options, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you for being, Ben. I think we should probably go to public comment, and then we can do our dialogue and our questions and everything all at that time, because then we can hear what all the public has to say as well, so. Madam Quirk?
We will start with Pamela Smith, followed by Ms. Green. Just a reminder, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, at some point, I would like to hear from Craig Heaps, but not in regard to a public comment three-minute limit. Last week, you know, the warehouse was able to come and do a presentation. They should have the same courtesy.
I'll have to think on that, because last time it was a study session, it's a little bit less formal in how we proceed with it, and this is a more formal hearing right now. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do that. City Attorney, you got any?
Yes, Mayor. So under, under our rules of procedure, a person who has a direct property interest in a public hearing is usually granted sufficient time to make their presentation in the discretion of the mayor. So typical public comment from regular members of the public is usually limited to three minutes. However, if you have a direct property interest at stake, usually you're given enough time to present your full thoughts on the application that could affect you. In, in this case, I believe that premium land development is representing the largest property owner in the freeway corridor specific plan, so it would make sense for you to give them whatever time you believe is appropriate to fully hear them out, along with any other property owner or applicant like the Pacific folks.
So let's hear public comment, and then we'll see where we are at with property owners' representatives. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm speaking on behalf of a Ucaipa resident who is disabled and unable to be here for you tonight. Pamela Smith, Outer Highway 10 Southeast. I speak tonight through someone reading on my behalf because I am disabled and unable to attend in person. I write to you as a longtime resident of Ucaipa, deeply disturbed by the direction the city is heading with the proposed developments under this plan. I urge you to halt all movement on this project and immediately call for greater comprehensive environmental and community impact studies before allowing further destruction of our town's character. When my family moved here in 2001, we chose Ucaipa for its small town charm, scenic hillsides, and slower pace of life. Every city council member I've supported over the years ran as a proponent of these very values. Now we are watching that identity erode in the name of rapid industrial and high-density residential expansion without voter input. The massive development plan between Live Oak Canyon Road and Cal Mesa border is not just growth, it's a wholesale transformation of Ucaipa into something unrecognizable. We are already seeing the early We are already seeing the early signs, air and vehicle pollution that harms public health, traffic congestion that makes freeway access a nightmare and requires rampant reengineering and infrastructure changes we are not prepared for. Light pollution steals the dark, starry nights that are part of Ucaipa's rural appeal. Increased crime, crowding, and strain on local services are inevitable outcomes of overbuilding. Have we learned nothing from Temecula or Fontana? Ask the residents who flood those cities what they think now. Friends in Temecula regret watching their peaceful town become another congested, overbuilt hub. We are on the same path. Once the land is leveled and the hills are gone, particularly around the beloved Christmas Tree Farm, there is no turning back. Ucaipa's wildlife, open spaces, and pastoral roads are part of our daily joy. We take pride in spouting cows, deer, and the natural beauty that surrounds us. Bulldozing these areas for warehouses and thousands of homes is not progress. It is the end of the Ucaipa we love. Decisions of this magnitude should and must go to a citywide vote. The people who live here, pay taxes here, and built their lives here deserve a say. My voice matters, as does the voice of every resident who moved here to escape exactly this kind of sprawl. If this project is approved, we will move, and we won't be alone. I urge you, in the strongest terms, to suspend all forward motion on the current plan, require full environmental traffic and infrastructure impact studies, hold multiple public town halls with full transparency, put any decision of this magnitude to a popular vote. Stand with your constituents, not the developers. Once this land is gone, it's gone forever. Don't let your legacy be the one that destroys what made Ucaipa special. Respectfully, Mark Garfield Keller.
Next, we have Ms. Green, followed by Susan Zan.
Big hand to Ms. Smith, by the way. I was a Fontana person, anyway. In a previous meeting, council member, you said that you visited the Water and Trash Company. You said that the Water Company is 15 years ahead and the school. Did you ask the Trash Company, Power, Gas, Fire, Police, EMT, Postal, are all they, are they all ahead 15 years to cover the amount of what you're considering? Shouldn't it be 60 years, considering how long people could stay here? Is this city prepared for a situation like Eaton or Palisades? What are you going to say to your constituents if we have that situation? Is this city going to pay out when they lose everything? You have businesses putting up no school parking because they are losing business. My family does it. We see a full parking lot, we go somewhere else. What about businesses being called calling police because kids beaten on one another and it takes three hours for them to show up? This proposal is going to be one cause more of your broken window system, not avoid it. Your budget is trying to tell you no. Your constituents managed to say no to Walmart, so why would this council say yes to a warehouse? What about the hours that warehouse run? The ones I have seen run 24/7. What about the hotels down there? Do they enjoy the light from the gas station that are in their windows, keeping the guests up all night? Redlands built a warehouse and it's empty. Could this city handle if it was there was one store or one restaurant that had a generator? Could they handle the whole city to go to them for for the food or supplies? Guess what? We've already been there. The city had four days of no power and the store lasted two. The restaurants closed even before that. If this city can't even handle what you have, then why are you trying to build more? The Oakland Road is a nice road to go to Marina Valley. Don't mess with the beauty and the natural habitat.
Susan Zan, District One. Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. As a longtime resident of Ucaipa, 55 years living here, attending Ucaipa Elementary Junior High, High School in Crafton. I am recently retired as an emergency management specialist with the United States Forest Service, and I wish to remain and enjoy the rest of my life here. That's why I'm here tonight. We need to find balance to the city's budget through strategic development due to past managerial decisions. An important question to consider is whether warehouses can help rectify past performance financial decisions while allowing Ucaipa to maintain its cherished open space qualities. The current balance of open space and growing businesses still lends to our city's uniqueness. It would be a shame to think that overbuilding will solve the financial dilemma of a budget. While warehouses may generate community, excuse me, warehouses may generate revenue and provide jobs, it's essential to evaluate their impact on the environment and the community character. Is the current Ucaipa Logistics Center warehouse built at County Line occupied yet? I don't think so. Every time I drive by it, in traffic that's backed up, it doesn't seem to be occupied. It seems that the inland empire is now focused more on warehouse distribution than being a safe, desirable place to live. How can we create a possible impression for our visitors and locals despite plans for future industrial development and more traffic and effects on air quality? And the fantastic job on the budget review showed that in one of the line items, there was $67,000 for air quality improvement. How is that going to need to be adjusted if you allow for warehouse and additional traffic and diesel and trucks, et cetera? One of the best starting points for the council to do is rebuild trust within our community is to listen. Everyone here tonight has something unique that they want to bring forward and what this community needs to them. It's crucial to involve residents in these decisions, ensuring transparency in the planning and decision-making process, and helping align projects with the community's needs and values, and adhering to our general plan and making informed, deliberate decisions. We cannot afford another financial decision based on a perceived quick fix for more revenue, thus sacrificing the qualities that make Ucaipa a special place to live. I encourage the council to take a step back, reassess the situation, consider the long-term benefits over short-term gains, and it's vital to consider the development. And so that way, we can build a future of honors our past-
Thank you for your comments.
...and embraces sustainable growth. Thank you.
Holly Warner, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Hi, councilpeople. Holly Warner, District One. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm kind of looking at the totality of this rather than any particular option, and I think we should recognize the magnitude of this development. So the numbers I saw in the report were 2,447 houses. That's a lot of homes. That's bigger than Chapman Heights. Like, this is a massive development for Ucaipa. Chapman Heights, for example, has 1,977, so it's significantly larger than that. And also in the report, it mentions over 1,000 truck bays. So I think between the residential traffic and the truck traffic, we really should be looking at infrastructure needs. I've mentioned this before. So Ms. Sosseta was nice, and she gave you a Xerox of a couple pages that I wanted you to look at in the environmental impact report. On page 5 dot 17 dash 9, it mentions a traffic impact analysis and the guidelines that were developed to, quote, "maintain the city's local congestion-based standards." And there were 28 on this list, 28 suggested improvements. Moving ahead to the mitigation measures then on page 5 dot 17 dash 20, you'll see that all of these have been struck through, that we're not moving ahead with any of these. And I brought this up in the last meeting, and Mr. Matlock said, well, we're not considering traffic to be a sequoia issue. I think that's probably debatable if you have a lot of people just sitting with their cars or trucks idling for 20 minutes to get on or off the freeway. I think that is an environmental issue in terms of air pollution and noise. But even if it's not a sequoia issue, it's certainly within the purview of city council in terms of planning. We don't want to have our on-ramps and off-ramps like they are in Beaumont. They put the cart before the horse. I think that a lot of this would be improved, like the Wildwood Canyon interchange, if that gets finished, because then that's going to have, you know, we're not going to be congested at as much, at least at Calamasa Boulevard and at Oakland Road. But we all know the speed at which Caltrans works. That could be 20 or 30 years from now. So I think that we need to actually have a plan for all this traffic, and I would actually like to see the numbers and know what the plan is going forward, because it really is a quality-of-life issue for all of us here. So I hope you'll consider that tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mr. Justin Berg.
Yeah, I got my address before, District One. Actually, it's not going to be my speech. Colleen asked me to speak for her, so I am going to read something that she wrote. The only thing is, is you have to forgive me because I do not have the fiery enthusiasm that she does, and you'll have to add it to when you hear this, okay? I've watched this discussion about the Freeway Corridor Specific Plan with interest. I've even made a comment last council session. I've sort of stopped halfway through because I thought you all weren't listening, but in fairness, that was my perception. These are my thoughts. Density is reasonable near the freeway, but if you have density in housing, you need to have parks. Otherwise, where are the kids going to play? They will play somewhere. If you don't put a school near them, the traffic will be a nightmare for the rest of the city, even if the other schools have room. And in addition, there are no school buses in the city. Councilman, please let me tell you a story. When my son was very young, he used to play SimCity. He used to play it for hours. It was a very interesting game to him. What he found, he needed to plan his cities far into the future, they fail. There were no quick fixes. He couldn't just make too many houses or too many farms, just because he liked cows. He couldn't put too many stores or orchestras and so on. All had to balance. What I see happening is a finite area of land with homes, proposed warehouses, storage space, and some revenue and income-producing spaces. While we can balance our budget in the short term with infusion of cash, we then have cut our ability to bring in income in the future. 20 years from now, our city is going to die. At least, that's what SimCity says. It's not as if we pick up our storage space and turn it into something else. It is done. But councilman, what's the hurry? This is not a game. This is all of our city. Take the time to figure out the long term. I got 56 seconds left. I'd like to say that, in fairness to the people proposing options four and five, you're not being presented any information. It's not being presented by the Planning Commission. Therefore, you're being funneled into two and three. And just to remind you, when this Planning Commission got option two, they voted it down, and that was not brought up either. Thank you.
Mr. Justin Berg, followed by David Duran.
When I heard that there was a proposal to build warehouses, I thought, oh, no, not again. Because I come from Riverside by March Air Reserve Base, and there's a lot of warehouses over there that have caused a lot of damage, negative effects. My first concern, and then I live here now. My first concern is increased congestion and road damage. I don't need to explain how the heavier the vehicle, the more damage is going to be to the road itself, no matter who lays the road down in the first place. My second concern is destruction of Ucaipa's natural beauty. We already have coyotes coming into the city as it is. I imagine with this construction, that will increase. My third is the potential to be a waste of construction, given the current international trade climate. There are already underutilized warehouses in the inland empire due to the natural fluctuation of shipping demands. I have a friend who works in Temecula. He's a warehouse truck driver. He sits in his truck at the night shift for hours at a time, idling, just waiting until ready to go. And then he goes as fast and as fast as he can, but that will now be in Ucaipa as well if this goes through. And I'm going to go fast. To end my comment, and I do not imply that the council operates in this way, and I have huge sympathy for fiscal staff, huge sympathy and empathy, but I ask for those here today to take caution, because we have a word for growth, for growth's sake, and it is called cancer. And I'm done.
David Duran, followed by Lloyd Rexsted.
Before I begin, I'd like to explain I have a respiratory condition that's being treated by the VA, but the more I talk is when I really start coughing, so forgive me for that, please. I appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. My name is David Duran. My address is 36064 Panorama Drive. As you know from my emails and letters to you, I'm opposed to the warehouses because of the noxious diesel-engine soot that will pollute the air in our community. We will have home-produced contamination. Thousands of frail seniors will suffer from the effects of the dirty air, as well as the youth in our community in gym classes, as well as those who play sports. Excuse me. I see this issue as the citizens of Ucaipa versus two entities. The first is the warehouse developer, who clearly has no compunction about building his warehouses on our pristine land of benches and hollows, of wildlife, and vernal streams. The second entity is the Ucaipa Valley Water District, or more accurately, members of the Board of Directors, some of whom have contacted you, talked with you for a yes vote so the Water Agency can put its water to use in this project. I believe the warehouses comprise a moral and ethical issue for you. Will the city vote against the best interests of the community's health and welfare? As to the developers' idea to hide the warehouses, the noxious diesel pollution still will pollute the air flow from the site into the city. If you approve the warehouses, I would rather you have the developer build the warehouses so that they are visible from the freeway and streets, so that it can be daily reminders of the blight that has been welcomed into our bucolic town by the city council. There has to be a better way than warehouses. Thank you for listening.
Lloyd Rexsted, followed by Christine Muller.
Lloyd Rexsted, 35741 Fremont Court. Regarding item agenda number 21, it must be stressed that the visual impact of the actual warehouse buildings is not the primary concern of this warehouse development. The primary objections to this project revolve around the environmental impact of the incomprehensible truck congestion and the air pollution resulting from the diesel exhaust. These two issues will not be mitigated by any projected studies or proposed impact statements. statements. It seems ironic to me that in presenting Options Three and Four, neither of these options have a clearly defined or illustrated legend, neither of them have one, associated with the land use schemes, which both One and Two have. On Options Three and Four, there are no legends for clarity similar to Options One and Two. There's no precise description of the specific parcels illustrated on the map. Why the omission? Clear definitions of the proposed land use in these two options are very vague. It may lead one to believe that this may have been intentionally omitted, so that future modifications, more preferable to the developers and not necessarily compatible to the desires of our residents, can be made and defended, overriding the objections of our residents. The deliberation on this vote warrants more input and consideration of possible options more desirable to the broader community of Ucaipa. For that reason, I ask the council to form a diverse task force to study the issue and present more widely supported options. Making any decisions tonight based on insufficient information would not be responsible. Thank you.
Christine Muller, Fonrich Place. Justin, I would hope that you listened to the city council meeting when you were absent last time, so I won't go over the same negative things everybody else did. But you know, I just want to ground ourselves here. There is no such thing as a beautiful warehouse. I have yet to see one. I'd also like to remind the city council that we were criticized as a city when the grand jury report came out, and it said that the voices of the citizens should outweigh and have more merit than the landowners. So I'd like to remind you of that. I'd also like to bring it back to common sense. Common sense. When you look at what was approved in 2008 on the first plan, which I was a part of, it wasn't done willy-nilly. It was done with meetings like this. Planning commissions, tweaking it, approval from the Planning Commission, approval from city council. So that was a good plan that we started with. If everything changes every 10 years, and they revisit it and they update it, that's a different story. We can do that. But if you look at Plan One, look at Plan Two, Plan Three, Plan Four, there's nothing about them that are similar. There's no, the purple and the red in the first plan. The intent was that that space was small enough that it would not accommodate a bunch of truck bays. There's 174 truck bays in each one of those purple buildings there. If you had put all the commercial, the red and the purple together, it wouldn't accommodate that. And you know, I thought it was kind of interesting, so I drove by TJ Maxx. Did you know TJ Maxx has one bay? Did you know that Vons has one bay? Did you know that Ross's has two small bays? Staples doesn't have a bay. Did you know that Stater Brothers on Bryant has three bays? The other two Stater Brothers in Calamisa and Ucaipa Boulevard, they both have two bays. So that's a lot of commercial in our city that accommodates this community. And so when you're taking that type of commercial out and putting warehouses in, and we know that those are the least, smallest return, can you imagine the tax dollars and the tax base we can create if this is a great plan? It's not a great plan. Look at Plan One. And they say that there's not enough open space. They said that that was a low return on open space. I would say, heck, no, that's not a low return on open space. I'd also say that's probably the least amount of grading and disturbance on those hillsides. So, Councilman Miller, you said that you didn't want to kick it down, the can down the hill. Planning Commission said no. City Council said no. You guys should say no.
Roe Randolph, followed by Kevin Miskin.
Couple of things that keep to be the common denominator are services, the fire, the paramedics, and the sheriffs. And I don't think that any amount of warehouses, any retail is going to ever fulfill that financial need. 20 years, 10 years, we'll probably be bankrupt from it. How do we solve it? I don't have that answer. Maybe some negotiating. We've got to get the contracts under control. I think there's some things that we could do, but nobody's really maybe had the time to look into the alternative of it. That's the problem. We have to fix that problem, so we can build and build and build. Nothing's going to get resolved. Now, when it comes to these options, none of them are good. But number one is sticking consistent with the general plan, which is open space. And in 2008, when they branched out the freeway corridor specific plan, they had 44% open space. Then they changed it in 2016, open space to conservation, which Mr. Fermin says, oh, that's flexible term. Well, that's a protected open space and conservation, from my knowledge, I'm looking it up. You can't do urban development on that, because you have a 25% slope. So I think we need to readdress all of that open space. We have to have that, and we have to have it for the animals in the corridor, and the erosion, and the fire hazard. There's so many things that we need to look at. We're in trouble, and we're in trouble because we can't afford the bills. You can build all you want and bring all the retail, and until you negotiate some of these contracts with these services. I even thought maybe an independent cop shop would be an option, but that's expensive, too. We need to find that solution before we go and destroy the hills and build these cluster homes, and Calamisa's going to build up. We will not be able to get on the freeway. It's going to be gridlocked. You guys know it. And if you live in the city, you already know it's already gridlocked. We have to find more alternatives. I don't think we're talking alternatives. I think we're tunnel vision. So I also believe maybe we should look into holding off on this. And with all due respect to city staff, they've been showing me so much grace and respect, and I appreciate it. And nothing personal, but maybe we should wait till we get a city manager and due process with the city manager. Maybe get some different visionary in here a little bit. I've been doing this, too, for a long time. I was part of the '08 deal. I used to get up here and talk about how, don't put the Walmarts, don't do all that. Thanks goodness for the economy slowdown. But maybe we should show a little slowing down the pace. Get a city manager, get some different visionaries, and start looking at some of the bills that we've got to pay. We can do more in-house. We can do landscaping with our own people. We can do plumbing with our own people. We have to slow the roll, because we're in trouble. Another 10 years, we're going to be bankrupt, and that, that's where we're going. So you guys have to think about these things. This is no joke. That's all I got to say.
Kevin Miskin, followed by Kathy Sellers, then Rain Mendoza.
Ladies and gentlemen, with due respect, if you can keep the applause down a bit, makes it difficult for those that are waiting to hear their name called. We're trying to keep this thing moving as much as possible. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Kevin Miskin, Ivy Avenue. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this subject this evening. There's a couple of things that I wanted to go over with the report. Again, I mentioned last time we met that there were no statistics really presented for Option Three, Option Four, and Option Five, which is a really deep concern to me. We did see a comparison. There was a matrix, but it was subjective. Option number one was ranked dead last, and as I look at the statistics, I don't see how that that can actually be possible. For instance, with the sequoia cost option, Option One and Option Five fail with a $750,000 mortgage. It seems to me that we've mortgaged Option One on the backs of Option Two and Option Three. I'm not sure how that occurred, but I think we ought to look into that. Secondly, Option Two, and I don't know about Option Three, because I didn't see any statistics, decreases regional commercial acreage by 58%, which reduces our sales tax opportunity revenue to the city. Warehouses are one of the poorest opportunities for sales tax. And I wanted to point out that I think there's a word semantics issue that we're facing this evening. We talk about warehouses. With Option One and the red being, you know, the potential for warehouses along the freeway, that's not even mentioned in Option Two and Three. But you still have the same problem with the red areas along the freeway that could still be warehouses. So I think we need to define warehouse. I think what people are concerned about here are the non-point-of-sale warehouses that are mega warehouses, the 1 million to 1.2 million square foot warehouses. What I'd like to see is more of what is intended, I think, in Option One, and that is the point-of-sale warehouses. I'd love to see a Bass Pro Shop, a Cabela's. I'd love to see Home Depot, because currently, I drive a long way to get to either Home Depot at Beaumont, or I have to go down to Redlands there. I think those are considered warehouses, but those are point-of-sale warehouses, and that increases the city revenue. Option Two and Three decrease open space by about 10%, increase warehousing by 770%, and they offer no public facilities. Option One had 45 acres that could have been used for schools. It could have been also used for parks for all those homes that are going to be going in on the south side of the freeway. That's missing in Option Two and Option Three. With Chapman Heights and Rolling Hills Developments, we got three schools, and we got a park, we got the community center, and we got this building as well, the property for this building. I also note that we decreased residential acres by 47% in Option Two and Option Three, and we decreased jobs by 11%. And warehouses are very poor sources of good-paying wages. And as has been pointed out already, we're increasing the diesel emissions, which account right now in California for 50% of inhalation cancer risks. Thank you for your time.
Kathy Sellers, followed by Rain Mendoza.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor Thorpe. Kathy Sellers, District One. I want to first thank our city manager, Jenna Crawford, for meeting with me last week. We had a great discussion, and I appreciate her taking the time out of her busy schedule for me. In researching how a city should be run, I found this. In general, city development plans that significantly alter the existing character of a neighborhood or have substantial community impacts should ideally require a community vote. This includes large-scale housing developments, changes to zoning that could lead to incompatible uses, and projects with major traffic or environmental consequences. Let the people vote on this. In 1980, our region had 234 warehouses. We have over 4,000 today. It boggles my mind when we hear the warehouse project reduces traffic impacts when it includes 1,500 diesel truck trips per day. In my opinion, that's the elephant in the room. Recently, the city of Riverside decided to build the Riverside Adventure Center, no warehouse. Hemet City Council voted no on a warehouse. Fontana paid $12 million to convert a warehouse into a homeless shelter. Rialto City Council voted no on a warehouse on Vineyard Avenue. Moreno Valley City Council voted no on the World Logistics Center warehouse. We understand that Calamisa and Cherry Valley and Beaumont are allowing warehouses, and there's a push for Ucaipa not to be left out of the development race. I hearken back to my childhood, when I wanted to do something my parents wouldn't allow, and I would say, but all of my friends are doing it. Invariably, the answer would be, if your friends jumped off a cliff, would you follow them? Thank you.
Rain Mendoza.
Hi, my name is Rain Mendoza, and I live in District One. So yesterday, I went on a hike with a friend that I haven't seen in five years. He has since moved on from Ucaipa, which many of my peers have. I'm still here. And we got up to the bench, this peak of the mountain right here, and we see our beautiful city. It was amazing, actually, the view, except for the warehouses, except for the two warehouses that we saw over there. And last time I saw him, five years ago, was during the COVID-19 pandemic. And one consequence of that pandemic was the increase in online shopping and warehouses. So the thing with warehouses is, I'm sure we're all guilty of the easy click-and-pick, buy online. But growing up in Ucaipa, it's always been, let's support local businesses. Let's be neighborly. Let's talk to our neighbors. Let's be a community. We've grown a lot, and it's harder when we grow. It's harder to connect with people after dealing with a pandemic that has you shut inside your house and afraid of catching something, or being afraid for political reasons on whether or not you did this or that. So last time I mentioned, I think having warehouses in Ucaipa really degrades our past reputation of supporting local businesses, and I think it would hurt local businesses even more. I don't think we do enough for local businesses. I try very hard to shop in Ucaipa, but sometimes there are not things that are available here. I would very much like to work in Ucaipa, but I don't really see many opportunities for someone of my skill level. So I just ask that you consider that, and it seems like this is a very, very huge problem. And I just want to offer my perspective as a person who has lived here throughout my childhood, for most of my conscious life, 20 years. And I really don't want to leave my home. It's been interesting seeing how it's developed. And I'm not the kind of young person that's yay city, yay urban. No, I really like, it's fun for me to go hiking with my friend. It's fun to enjoy where we came from and see the mountains and see all our neighbors below us. And I don't think having warehouses, having increased traffic, having increased health problems, having a gamble of hopefully bringing money into the city, I don't think that's going to make our city stronger. So I believe it was Option Five that called for no warehouses and for amending other plans. Yeah, that's it. I just don't want warehouses. Thank you.
I have no more comment cards.
I think when we had the last meeting, we had Pacific Oaks was, came up and gave a quick presentation by the directional of our council members. But then there was also dialogue, like we asked questions and whatnot. So just on the presentation side, was it 15, 20 minutes? Do you have any idea of timeframe?
About 30, 5 minutes. For Pacific Oaks? I don't think it was that long. I don't recall exactly the time, but I don't believe it was that long.
Good.
Yeah, I think it was about 30 minutes. We received an email from Mr. Heaps that felt like that was unfair. So in fairness, I think he should get 30, whatever it was, 33 minutes. If he felt it was unfair, let him have a shot.
Okay, well, we've got, we have other property owners and representatives here tonight besides Mr. Heaps that wishes to speak. If you are a property owner or representative for one of the property developments, line up over here, and you can get your opportunity to speak. I'll give you 30 minutes, but let's try to keep it.
I don't need 30 minutes, please. Thank you.
Within that timeframe, if we can.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Craig Heaps, West Coast Entitlement, 543 West County Line Road. As you know, I represent Ken and Sandy Robinson, as well as the four or five generations of the Robinson family, that all frankly have an interest in this study session and the results. It is clear to the family that the most recent version of the freeway corridor specific plan is more about the warehouses than anything else. In 2008, the current version, as it stands now, of the freeway corridor specific plan was approved. While it doesn't specifically call out any warehouses, the commercial zoning could be used for industrial uses, as the one we saw that was built recently over by County Line Road. To be clear, I'm not against the warehouses. I'm not here to speak against the warehouses. I'm just here to talk a little bit about the project. And on May 27th, 2021, and I know they've given a timeline, but just to give a little context, the 2021 Pacific Oaks pre-app was submitted. I realize I was a different council with city manager Ray Casey, but it wasn't but 18 days later that the city council had a study session to initiate an updated update, and the consultant placeworks was confirmed. Less than two months later, the Transwestern CUP for a 363,000-square-foot warehouse on County Line Road was submitted. By March 28th of 2022, the city By March 28th of 2022, the city issued consultant contracts of a combined $848,513 for subsequent EIR and biology reports. Those reports were part of the subsequent EIR that was adopted September 23rd, 2024, and rescinded on April 14th of 2025 after litigation issued by the Ucaipa Preservation Society. All of this shows the importance of warehouses in the city of Ucaipa, the way things were fast-tracked and moved through the system. I was going through past agendas this weekend and was reminded of a public comment by Dr. Hanson Wong prior to the closed session on April 8th, 2024. He mentioned it was highly inappropriate to speak about price and terms between Pacific Oaks Industrial LLC and the city when a project had not been approved. I also found it strange since the land purchase was between Pacific Oaks and the Palmers. I think Mr. Wong may have had a little intuition, since I believe that it was when Pacific Industrial agreed to gift the city 60 acres of land that they were purchased and are shown in the current option three and our option as residential property to the left of the warehouses. Hopefully, this property, this possibly is for affordable housing, I'm not sure, but in the long run, I think it's the best bet. This discussion also happened before the city was brought, the project was brought before city council to get their approval, an item that was continued to a later date. Our plan presented to planner Ben Matlock on February 26th this year, now being shown as option four today, is here tonight. Please understand, February 28th until today, there has never been an invitation by the city planner to discuss the merits of our proposed options or how to incorporate these elements to make option three and option four work together. Suddenly, after no activity since December, there is no time, everything has to happen now. That is short-sighted in so many ways. If it was your property, I think you'd want to make the decision-makers to get it right. Much of what you have received from Ken and Sandy Robinson, including the email that was depicted earlier, was a desperate push at a last minute to protect their land and their interest. I want to point out, when it was discussed earlier, that there was money spent by the city that the property owners should be grateful for, that in both instances, when the land was trying to be entitled and approved, then a project moved forward, whether it was, whether it was Lowe's, or I mean, Home Depot in that case, or Walmart or so forth, the Robinsons spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on EIRs, in fact, almost up to a million dollars, and ended up with nothing in the end. Each of, so I want to talk about the OSC zones. For those in the audience, that is Open Space Conservation Zones. In each of these areas on OSC, the dark green areas, you're unilaterally erasing all value of that property. That is not just downzoning, it's completely devaluing someone's property. Guess what? Most of the OSC zoning is on the property owned by the Robinsons, some property owned by South Mountain Water and some by the Pumpkin Patch. The excuse is that these areas might have potentially sensitive habitat, or there are extra permitting requirements for the waters of the US. My friends, that does not render the land useless. In this case, the city failed to conduct protocol surveys. Typically, for an area-wide EIR, this sort of desktop-level survey might be okay, but when you are downzoning someone else's property, you better be damn sure that there are real substantiating reasons why the downzoning must take place, not based on an assumption, but substantial evidence. Otherwise, the legal exposure is extreme, as in in this case. The areas are OSC, see, inexact, the surveys are incomplete, and the reports state, in many cases, the biologists were unable to access the properties, the study was unable to get to the areas, or they were on private properties, unable to get on them. This study was ordered to secure the Pacific Oaks warehouses and were paid by the city at that time. Again, this is all about the warehouses. Any property zoned OSC can be mitigated in a number of ways. By the way, some of the OSC land that is shown in the property for the Robinsons is flat land. It's not all where there's mitigation majors or issues. In fact, in many cases, the stream beds are not even followed, there's different lines that are followed there. The waterways can be mitigated by going through the process with the Army Corps of Engineers or through the California Department of Fish and Game. Any habitat issue can be mitigated in several ways as well. Developers deal with mitigation issues in almost every project in California these days. Each project applicant can and will be required to do their own biological study to bring it up to speed, to make sure it works. Also, expenses for the waterways being too costly? It depends on the project, and that's usually not the case. Look at Pacific Oaks. $38 million is the number they keep banding about for the waterline, and I think that's great. Install the sewer, then. Bring in dry utilities like electricity, gas, cable, telephone. Widen Live Oak Canyon. Build an access road on the backside. Do approximately $50 million in grading for the property land piece, and that's about what it's going to be, 50 million just for the grading alone. Build the buildings, the parking, the facilities. Who would have thought that $250 to $300 million to build 2 million square feet warehouses in two buildings was cost-effective? I bet nobody in this room would at the time. Of course, what hasn't been revealed, among other things, is that each developer in the Freeway Quarter-Specific Plan, whether another warehouse, a home builder, a commercial developer, or any other use, would need to pay their fair share of the expenses for the infrastructure being brought in by Pacific Oaks. Real quick on the plan, just so I can bring it up and I can mention it. Each one of the property owners, this is the Pumpkin Patch here, which is completely included in what they're doing. This here is the, this one and this one are the Pacific Oaks warehouses. This one was added in, but can easily become housing. Housing here, housing here, housing here, and I have to agree with Mr. Prestiata a little bit, even though it doesn't show the green areas like these do, believe, you can believe that 40% landscaping means 40% of landscaping. Additionally, the warehouses are going to have to bring a road on the backside, they're going to have to acquire some entitlement easements. I'm not sure why this piece here is industrial, because if you look at the original plans, this is zoned as residential, and so now it's, I don't think people that live in the Live Oak Canyon are going to be too happy to see a warehouse there or anything of that nature. And here's a grim reality I want you to consider. If Pacific Oaks decides at any time that the risk is not worth the reward, and we approve Plan Three, we're in no man's land as a city. No infrastructure, our housing element is out the door, and we're in trouble with the state. Commercial land is worth more than residential land. Only a large shopping center, big box builder, as was spoken about earlier, could help to bring in infrastructure. If Pacific Oaks walks away, if we lose our commercial frontage along the freeway by zoning so much property as in here and here, as unusable, we lose long-term sustainability as a city. All the retail revenue we are already losing, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, will be severely increased as our residents shop in Redlands, Beaumont, and other cities. Keep the Freeway Quarter commercial like Plan Four, and it protects the future of the city. Those that believe that saving a dollar today will make for big savings now, had better understand that if the city was willing to spend almost $900,000 to do the SCIR for the opportunity for warehouse development, could be well-suited to spend whatever it might take to make sure we cover all our bases. Don't let the earlier presentation by Mr. White scare you into believing that cost is really an estimate. In reference to the Wildwood Canyon off-ramp, let me say this: this location is no guarantee. Do not cancel the important commercial land for a free pass at 2050, taking land by eminent domain and saving money. Consider this: at Cherry Valley Boulevard, the proposed off-ramp from eastbound that would empty onto Cherry Valley Boulevard at Calamasa Boulevard is now being planned to reroute around the warehouses, the empty warehouses, I might add, 2 million square feet of them, and exit further up Calamasa Boulevard. It just proves that today's freeway plan can change as early as tomorrow. Don't be hasty to make plans based on today's designs. A lot can change in the next 25 years. The open space conservation on today's designs need to be changed. A lot can change in the next 25 years. The designation for OSC must go, is not necessary, and it just makes no sense. Either pick option four, or order that we can look at three and four together and really put something together that works. As a council, this may prove to be your most important decision in your tenure. Whatever you select, we support, we're here to help, and I appreciate your indulgence in the time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heaps. Next. Please state your name and who you represent.
You guys hear me okay? This is Dan Floriani. I'm a co-founder of Pacific Industrial, spoken in front of you guys, so thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing us. I do not want to belabor all the things that have been talked about already tonight. I simply wanted to come up and just reiterate a few of the things I mentioned last time that I, we come out here all the time in order to listen. I always find it a little bit humorous that people think this was a rushed process when we're four and a half years into a project where we've spent an enormous amount of time listening to residents, listening to council, listening to former staff and city managers in order to make informed decisions to provide a project that met a lot of the objectives that you guys were trying to achieve as a council. I still think it's misunderstood what our intent is on the project. I know there's not going to be every resident in the county or in the city that would want warehouse development. I fully understand that. We are actually not a group that's fighting against whether it's open space or open preserve or permanently open preserve. We kind of get that. I have three children myself, I want them to live a happy life, and so we designed a project that has 300 acres in it, and we are setting aside 95 acres of that as permanent open space. It'll never be developed. There's not one person in this room or listening online that has likely ever been through this specific property, because it has gates up, and it has for years. We plan on taking down all those gates and opening up this piece of land that the city values to be able to have walking trails and hiking trails through the property that will not interact with our warehouse, mind you, and we spent a lot of time doing that, opening up 95 acres. I mean, look around this city and find 95 acres of open space where a new park is essentially developed. We have, as Mr. Heaps mentioned, it was not a random thought or idea, but a willingness on our side, no one ever actually specifically asked us, to set aside the 60 acres that is zoned residential on our Plan Number Three. Our intent was, we're clearly not residential developers, and we don't understand exactly what the city wants. We're providing an opportunity, which I think very few developers in the world would voluntarily do, to give this land to the city so the residents can sit down with you guys and decide what the best use of that land is. We have had great dialogue with the Pumpkin Patch, who we love that community benefit and think should stay there, but clearly they have a parking issue. Maybe it could be solved or partly solved with some community effort and staff and helping them with overflow parking when it's the worst. And the last thing I would say, other than, I mean, there were so many things to address from some of the comments, I'm just going to jump to, like, traffic. We paid attention to traffic. If you guys understand the process, we don't get to touch the traffic studies. It is done completely independently, way far away from us and our input. In order to understand what the full build-out is of the project, I think what the city's staff has not recognized well enough for their efforts on Plan Two and Three, in this case, in actually providing for future growth for the city, but simultaneously significantly reducing the traffic from what the current specific plan is planned as. That is very rare and not a small feat, and that has to do with a lot more land than just our property. We are committed, as people are throwing around the $38 million number, we are committed to bringing down a waterline four miles down the street in order to make the other side of the freeway that's largely been paralyzed from being able to grow or do anything to be able to develop. There would be job opportunities in that case, for the young lady who spoke, because you're allowing smaller developments and retail buildings to be able to actually build their building, whereas they couldn't do it now and actually plug in any utility that would allow their restaurant, their hotel, or their business to operate as a viable entity, and our project facilitates that. There was one other comment, I mean, just as far as the tables not being on there, I think it's, the reason is because Plan One is the current specific plan, has all the tables done. Plan Two is a fully analyzed EIR that has completed all its studies. Plan Three and Four are an update and an idea. And the goal of this meeting is to decide which direction to go. If you pick a direction for either Three or Four, much less Five, an entire table and studies will be recirculated or available for anyone to actually read online, so understand that it's just timing mechanism there. And that is it. I just know, you know, I'm always available to staff and to anyone on the council to discuss this. I've talked with many residents before this meeting and after the last hearing. I'm always available, we're super accessible, we're a small privately-held company in order to be able to do something different. And whether you appreciate it or not necessarily, I do have to tell you that this project would set a new bar for how you can do development in a community like this, and I think it would set a really interesting precedent for actually the rest of California on how we make these difficult decisions to land plan going forward, including logistics, providing jobs, and doing infrastructure that requires no taxpayer dollars in order to facilitate future development. And that is it. So we've been here long enough, I'll wrap up there unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Bringing it back here for questions and comments. Councilman Beaver, would you like to go first, or would you like to go last? Since you weren't here last time. Have any projects been submitted for the current plan projects?
Under the existing specific plan, the only projects that have been submitted is the Transwestern project, now the Brookfield project, that is currently finishing up their final improvements for certificate of occupancy, so it's not open yet because it's almost done. And then West Coast Entitlement had also submitted a trucking operation for the property directly north of it as well, and so that is the other project that's been submitted within the plan.
Forgive my request to have you speculate, but why do you think the commercial property north of the freeway there between Wildwood Canyon Road and Oakland Road haven't, there's been a project something forward?
So I think, and I believe city council got an email from the property owner up there about a project that was being sought for there with a tenant that ended up going to Highland, and infrastructure was one of the deal points that ended up kind of destroying that deal where they could not make that come to fruition, and so bringing the waterline down is one of the key elements that has been an impediment to development and certainly, I think, other places. We have seen different proposals kind of throughout the time. I did see, as an example, Deuterality, which is a warehouse developer that got bought out by Prologis, did provide a site plan example for a warehouse at the Pumpkin Patch. Obviously, I don't think that would have been the city's desire, but other than that, there hasn't been a lot of movement on any types of projects within the plan beyond that, so, other than the two that have actually formally come in.
I don't like any of this. We find ourselves in Ucaipa in the same conversation since I was in school, since I was a school kid. We need to develop, but we don't want to. We need to have public safety, but it's expensive. We need to have public safety, but it's expensive. We don't want to pay taxes more than we already do. And this is where we're at. This is where we're going to always be at. Unless we develop, we're not going to be able to fund the way of life that we want. Row, you're right. The cost of public safety is going up, but we can't negotiate with them because we're not their employer. We're a contracted city that asks for public safety. So we need that area to be developed with commercial, maybe not, okay, let's say, let's put warehouse off the table. Industrial, or industrial off the table, just commercial. But there's no utilities there to support that. I don't like Four at all because that is encroaching more on the community that I don't want to see developed on the north end there, where those seismic trenches have been dug for the last 30 years on the north side of that hillside. One is amenable because on, from our side of the hill, our home, we still see, get the benefit of seeing that. And on the freeway side, which, make no mistake, the I-10 freeway is not rural. There's nothing rural about the Interstate 10 freeway. In fact, I think by definition is the exact opposite of rural. But I was briefed by Ray Casey regarding the possibility of Costco being in that area. But now Highland gets to benefit from that and we don't. And when I was elected in 2020, I was dressed down by an elderly gentleman who, boy, he must have been a Marine or something because that man could yell. And when I was outspoken about not wanting Kaiser down by the Boulevard and not wanting to see development, he dressed me down about how dare I make him have to drive to Redlands when we can have services here for him to benefit from. And there are people here who don't want to drive to San Bernardino to get bulk items, you know, a five-gallon jug of mayonnaise from Costco. I don't have the answer. And I don't, and it's been said several times here that there's, I think it was, I think Kathy Sellers, I think you said last meeting that I listened to, that there is an untapped group of citizens who are, who know the answer. Well, by all means, let's hear the answer. Because as beautiful as those hillsides are, we can't tax them. We don't get to benefit from there in a financial way. It'd be nice if we could find a way to sell people to get to look at it as they drive by, pay a fee. But that's not going to happen. What do you guys think?
Do you want to go next? You want her to go? Ma'am, would you like to go next?
Okay. I actually have a couple of questions for staff, if that's okay. We've talked a lot tonight about the FEMA designated information. Have we heard from any other agencies, such as the Department of Fish and Wildlife, in regards to any species there that might be in jeopardy?
I remember that they did provide some comments through the EIR process. As a general note, the open space conservation did help alleviate a lot of their concerns that they would normally have had. I do want to clarify, the open space conservation is the functional equivalent of what open space was in the old specific plan. The limitations are exactly the same. So we didn't create a new, more restrictive open space, but we created a more flexible open space on top of what was already there. But by specifying some of that stuff and making it more clear, and then by making sure that some of the areas didn't encroach upon those drainage channels, that helped alleviate a lot of what would normally be their standard docket of comments that they would have otherwise levied on these type of project reviews.
That area could be, is very valuable when it comes to being developed commercially. And I know there's issues there with drainage and all of that, but with the technology and everything, and the people in that business, you know, would know how to handle that. So I just want to point that out, that I think it's a very valuable piece of property that could be developed. And if we have nothing specific from any agency, then I would suggest that that be changed totally, not in the dark green.
Could I address the open spaces as well? Just from the legal perspective?
Sure.
Under state law, it's government code section 65910. The city is required to have an open space designation in its zoning code. We're also required, under the code sections that relate to general plans, to have an open space element within our general plan. If you look in our general plan, you'll see that there's language on open space. And if you compare the language that's in the city's general plan on open space, which is open spaces designed to protect hillsides, ridgelines, drainage courses. That's what open space is for. And you compare that to the freeway corridor specific plan update, it's virtually identical language. So, you know, I think that, just from a legal perspective, I think it's perfectly reasonable to discuss where's the line, right? How much of the hillside, how much of the ridgeline, how much of the drainage course? You know, are we going to designate as open space? But I did want you to be rest assured that designating those features as open space is defensible. Because I did hear some, I've heard some grumblings about, you know, this is a taking, this could be unconstitutional. You know, designating something as open space would be perhaps a taking or unconstitutional if it had no viable use afterwards. There are viable uses that are included in the plan, including agricultural uses, the uses to which they are being put now. And then we also have to consider, you know, when you're talking about something like a drainage course, right? We can't pave over a water of the United States and, you know, build a Walmart on top of it.
I understand that.
You know, there's a whole lot of state and federal regulations that go into that. So I just wanted to give you rest assured, but obviously, the extent of it, where to do it, or even if you do have that designation there, is a policy issue.
Okay. Well, I do believe at one point, maybe it's on Four, where it was commented that part of it wouldn't really, is pretty flat land. And so that could be an area that could be developed.
Absolutely. Like I said, you know, where that line is, that's a policy question for the council. I just wanted you to be rest assured that designating something as open space, it's not, one, it's, we're required to be able to do that occasionally. And two, it is not something that's unusual in the zoning practice.
Okay. And then one other question is, Plan Three involves thousands of proposed housing units. Okay? If we wouldn't go that way, they're going to have to be approved somewhere else in Ukaypa. So where do we have open land and infrastructure that's going to be able to handle that housing?
So that is the multimillion-dollar question, I would say. You know, certainly as the plan, based on the initial council direction and based on state law, we can't downzone the specific plan capacity. So the 2447, which is what the existing plan had, we kept that number. Technically, the number changes, I think, by 25 units, and that really is just a kind of rounding as you take the different land areas, and that just ends up being what the number is. Doesn't mean that all that number has to be built, but we can't change the capacity downward. And so based on the bubbles and kind of the different areas, that ends up what it is. But if we were to try to remove it, then that's when it becomes challenging. One, because we can't downzone it, but then the way SB 330 also works is it references downzone the capacity of a specific plan as well. And so then it creates a little bit of additional murky kind of water in terms of even just getting rid of it in the plan entirely becomes challenging.
And to piggyback off of Ben's comments there, SB 330, as he mentions, encapsulates the concept of what's called no net loss, which is, you know, if we were to reduce or attempt to reduce the housing availability in this area, we would be obligated to place it somewhere else. Generally speaking, the city council's policy direction, you know, that's sort of an amorphous thing, but has generally been to be denser, closer to the freeway, and less dense the further you get away from the freeway, for a whole bunch of reasons, including it's easier on infrastructure and traffic to do it that way. It just so happens, the way the city, you know, growth pattern has been over the last several decades, that we have a lot of open space near I-10. So, you know, to answer your question, it would have to go somewhere else.
Okay. So just to kind of summarize here, there's 52 million square feet, and the warehouses will only be occupying 2 million square feet. So without the infrastructure that the warehouses bring, would any development be financially feasible, or will it ever happen?
I think the short answer is, in the foreseeable future, no, just because it hasn't happened before. We have 20 years of track record of showing, trying to get development in that area. And essentially, the impediments have outweighed the ability for those projects to come forward.
Okay.
And then, councilmember, I had a little bit of a discussion about financing infrastructure now, if that'd be okay. I think it's responsive to your question.
Okay.
You know, in addition to what Ben said, which is, if the current zoning could make that economically viable, it probably would have done so sometime in the last 20 years. There's really very limited options in terms of creating that infrastructure other than a large project. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be warehouses, but you're going to need a very large-scale development of some kind, a very large housing development, a very large commercial center, a very large industrial center. And, you know, past experience has shown, you know, we've had large commercial development attempt to come forward, and it didn't seem that they were able to front-load those infrastructure costs. We've been asked by members of the community, is there some other way to fund that infrastructure besides a single large development? People have floated things like general obligation bonds. A general obligation bond, you know, our former member of the school district's probably familiar with how general obligation bond works, but just, it's not something cities typically do. And what it is, you take it to the, a vote to the people. They have to, by two-thirds, approve a special property tax that would be an assessment on every property in the city of Ukaypa. And that special tax would be used to pay debt, known as bonds, that the city used to pay for infrastructure. You know, similar, when you're looking at something like lease revenue bonds, that's a way to do debt bonds without going a vote to the people or having a special property tax applied. But you have to have a revenue source that you can secure it. So that's very common. You look at the Water District. The Water District will do lease revenue bonds or revenue bonds generally. And that's because they're able to secure it through the revenue of water fees. We don't really have a revenue source like that. You may see something, you know, people talk about Melaruz. They're talking about community facilities districts. Those districts can issue debt, but it has to be approved by the landowners. And landowners are typically only going to volunteer to join something like that when they have a development that is in progress, that is going to pay that debt service. You're not going to typically get an owner of vacant land who doesn't have a pending project to join in on it. So that's a long way of saying, we did research basically every other way to pay for bringing infrastructure to this area, including the city paying for it itself or using some sort of debt mechanism. And at the end of it, I could not see, well, I can see the legal process, and I can explain that to you. I cannot see any of those processes actually playing out in reality.
Okay. So what it comes to is if that one section, that whole one side, including Pumpkin Patch, wants to be developed, we have to have the infrastructure there, which means the warehouses are the key to the whole thing on that side. So one more question. Is there any reason that we can't approve Option Three and have prove it as two plans? The one plan with the warehouses, the infrastructure comes there and all that. The second plan would be on the other side of the freeway and let them work out their issues and things that they have to work out to be able to be developed. What would be wrong with that?
So I can, while Ben's pushing the button, I can tell you that this entire specific plan is analyzed as one project. And so splitting it up may complicate the environmental analysis. That may be something that Ben has more experience with and can speak to. There may be some other things. I'll think of some other reasons why that's going to be challenged while he talks. But it's a creative question, and, you know, something we can certainly address.
Yeah. A lot of it just comes down to is environmental analysis is tied to the outcome of the specific project. And so once we start kind of hybridizing different outcomes, then the analysis has no longer remained to either outcome. It's only fragmented to kind of each one. Now, that said, specific plans, just like any other plan, can continue to evolve with time. And so if, let's say hypothetically, a project does come in on the north side that, you know, either, let's say, through the interchange project or just, you know, an opportunity comes by and there needs to be amendments, it doesn't mean that that amendment can't be considered on its own merits. There's also the avenue to do that. Or let's say hypothetically, because South Mountain owns, you know, land on that side, they have an infrastructure project that they want to do, that can modify some of the things that's happening around there, too. That can also provide opportunities where, okay, hey, this new opportunity presented itself. We didn't know this information at the time. And so it's worth kind of relooking at that, maybe a bit more focused on that specific element. And so just because we go down a direction of one planned direction or another doesn't mean that that now is gospel for eternity. We still have opportunities to go back based on the circumstances that warrant it. And so no matter what, you know, whether or not we go with Option Three or whatever the case may be, it doesn't mean that we're dead-set on that map is going to be like that for eternity. It can still adjust based on whatever opportunities we need to do in the future based on that project. And the specific plan itself, with the text in it and all the details, is meant to offer flexibility because, as we've learned over the past 20 years, is that if you have a very rigid plan without a lot of wiggle room, you kind of pigeon your whole self to something that will never happen. And so it doesn't make a lot of sense to be that rigid in that kind of circumstance.
Okay. Thank you.
Addressing that, councilmember, one of the things that we had talked about back in August when this originally came forward and speaking to that flexibility, was adding a section to 6.6 of the specific plan update that would have allowed for the waiver of application fees and even the city to cover additional environmental study costs when a proposed project was going to result in a significant economic impact to the city. So that is the creation of, I think we had 150 new permanent jobs or the increase in sales tax revenue of at least $200,000 per year. There was a funding mechanism that was contemplated and still could be contemplated that would have allowed the city to be flexible with someone who's coming forward to make those changes to the specific plan.
Councilman Miller?
I just have a few questions. I'll probably go to Fermin first. How likely is it if we we don't proceed with the plan, let's say we proceed the plan absent the infrastructure contribution by the Pacific Coast Development, how likely is that Wildwood Canyon interchange ever happen?
Well, let's see, about five or six years ago, we initiated the process, the first of five steps to get to, the first of four steps to get to construction. So right now, the EIR for the Wildwood Interchange is scheduled to be circulated later this year. Once it goes through that process, then Um, w- once it goes through that process, uh, then the next step is the the. The engineering design component and which will outline the right-of-way needs. So. Right now, we're we're working with SBCTA and Caltrans to complete the 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 step that we're in now. So right now, i- i- it's not stalled. It's, it hasn't been put on the shelf. It's moving in in that direction. It does take a few years to get through that process. But, um, eh, you know, and SBCTA has it prioritized in their, uh, Measure I. Um, free phase interchange plan. So, um. You know, things may change, but right now everything's headed in the right direction. It's on the priority list. It's, we're doing what we need to do at this point to keep it moving forward.
Excuse me just a minute. Um, I am on that committee. And what I have seen is twenty thirty. Is when it's looked at.
Councilman, uh, Councilmember Wusley, and thank you for me. I guess this would be for Jennifer or Phil. Uh, absence of project development, impact fee contributions, added sales tax, property tax revenue. What is our long-term fiscal forecast since we have rising public safety costs? That are sure to eat up Measure S funds eventually and trans- uh, trash franchise feed due. Uh, that are rapidly, uh, eh, with our rapidly escalating cost. I mean, what does the, what does the future look like? If we don't, uh, uh, get development going down in that area with this project? Phil, you, thank you.
Um, um, I'll I'll take a crack at it and Jennifer can correct me. Um, well, um. It would be a much simpler, um, answer to your question if we had a long-term financial plan. It's on, uh, council goals this year to develop one. Um, those things are what keep me up at night. Um, the the certainly the, um, the escalating public safety costs. Um, we, uh, earlier in the presentation, I I I talked a little bit about, um, and Jennifer ta- talked about it also, um, the depletion of that that fire fund. Um, future backfills, once that's depleted, falls on the general fund. Um, all all of that leads to the costs of public safety are going up faster than. The, um, amount of revenue is going up. Revenue is going up. Public safety costs are going up faster. Um, and that's just to prioritize public safety costs. We have all the other things that you mentioned. That are also escalating. And so to, um, uh, make sure that we are okay into the future, the short answer is, uh. We we need more money or to revisit the, um, the, uh, the 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 level of service across the board. Um, that the city provides. Um, so I don't have an easy answer for you. It's it's not good. Without without more money, it's 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 not good. We have a. We have a, we're good, uh, this this fiscal year, it's balanced. Um, but as early as, uh, fiscal twenty-seven with the depletion of the fire fund. We're back to talking about, okay, what are we gonna, what are we gonna cut back on, um, as far as service, providing service?
If you could hang in there, Phil, I really appreciate it. Uh, these other ways are probably key takeaways that we talked about. On maybe financial issues in the future and what we're kind of evaluating here. Make clear, there's there's some feeling sentiments about anti warehouses and what that really means. Uh, I had a discussion with somebody today that I said basically Home Depot's a warehouse. You know, um, Trader Joe's is a warehouse, just has stuff in it. But then the conversation was mega warehouses, Bob. And I understand, uh, what that delineation is between the two. But let's talk about some key takeaways and maybe you're aware of this. You know, retail stores are essential sources of re- reoccurring sales tax for us. Especially in scenarios where warehouses do not operate as point-of-sale locations, right? So if it isn't a point-of-sale location, for example, e-commerce, which is popular now, everybody orders from Amazon. If you had one of them houses that you could establish, there's some rules for that, that you can establish at Chiqaiba residents, that's a different. Different ballgame as far as point-of-sale. But if you don't have that, I mean, retail stores provide what? For revenue for us.
Yeah, so re- retail is is key. Uh, there was a discussion, uh, one of the public commentators mentioned, uh, point-of-sale warehouses. Uh, a point-of-sale, uh, warehouse, um, uh, i- is threading the needle and that's, that's, uh, my, my, I don't know. Um, winning the lottery is is, that'd be, that'd be fantastic if we could get a point-of-sale warehouse. The the the, um, fiscal benefit of a non-point-of-sale warehouse is not sales tax. It's 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 minimal, zero. Um, but property tax is is significant on on warehouses. So it's a different revenue stream. Um, uh, there was a comment on, um, what about a a vacant vacancy in a in a warehouse? A non-point-of-sale warehouse? Um, eh, eh, it has an assessed value and it's it's, um, property tax is being levied. And so whether it's vacant or not, um, the assessed value is what drives the property tax. It's a different, it's a, it's a, it's apples and oranges. It's revenue sources. They're both important. Um, I think with the the size of the freeway corridor, there's there's room and need for for both. Um, uh, point-of-sale, retail, sales tax, um, and and, um. The the warehouses too, not because of the sales tax, but because of the property tax associated with it. The other component of it is the, um, uh, the the Ho- the Home Depots, the 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 big box retailers. Um, those provide a significant amount of sales tax and, um, everybody knows that. Um, a lot of cities know that. And the retailers know that they provide a benefit. And so they're, that industry is, um. They're they're not in the business of saying, hey, we'll give you a bunch of freebies if you let us go to your town. They're saying, what will you provide us and what kind of, uh, sales tax breaks will you give us if we decide to set up shop there? And so, um, uh, one of the the gentleman that spoke, um, on the warehouse side from Pacific Oaks. He alluded to, um, there's probably not people lining up to to give the deal that they're doing. Yeah, there's not, because it's a different industry. And and nobody, uh, gets excited for a non-point-of-sale warehouse. And because of that, that they're willing to have other discussions with us, whereas the big box retailers, um, they're, it's a different industry. And a different marketplace and a lot of people competing, um, for their business. And so, um.
And I agree. And I, and touching on that, you know, eh, my notes here, visibility to customers is key for tenant selection, right?
Absolutely.
And while site selection is crucial for finalizing a deal with somebody. Strategic zones, that's defined by land use, plays a major role in attracting quality tenants. That have the greatest impact on our tax revenue. I I E. the freeway corridor specific plan. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, the the, uh, the the freeway, the frontage of the freeway is high visibility. A great spot for for, uh, a retailer. Um, um, the the part, the warehouse project, um, because of the, uh, non-visibility of of the location. Along with, uh, some of the surrounding infrastru- infrastructure that's in place, uh, the 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 treatment facility that's, uh, uh, adjacent to it. Um, really limits the, um.
Yeah.
Um, there there's not a a a big box retailer that would say, hey, I, that's where I wanna open up shop. There wouldn't, there is not housing that would say, hey, I wanna, that's where I wanna sell homes. Um, so it's it's really limited. Um, so yes, all of those things are factored in. But the freeway corridor is a big enough, um, uh, property. Where, uh, strategic zones, um, they come into play with all different types of, um, development.
And, you know, with that, we also have to, you know, admit or or discover. That traditional warehouses typically provide no sales tax revenue. They don't unless they're point-of-sale. It's really property tax.
Yes, sir.
Um, but you still get something out of that. A point-of-sale warehouses have the potential to exceed all other retail contributions, though. You know, uh, when I was on the school board, I went to, uh, I think a, uh, s- state of the city for a for a town next to us. There was a town that was, I would say, east of them, that was talking about their Amazon warehouse and what the revenue was for that town. And I got thinking about, most of us use e-commerce. How many of us have prime, you know, with the Amazon delivery each day to our house? Uh, I know our family does. Probably every other day, we're getting stuff delivered. That is kind of common now. Uh, we still like to go to stores. Hopefully, if we can have some nearest to go, Trader Joe's, et cetera, we're getting now. But we do use that. Amazon sees to be going to electric trucks and some of the things they're doing for technology. California is. Making a better effort for clean energy. There's no doubt about that. We have new rules and restrictions on how that's gonna be. That's a state issue. You know, freeways are crowded. Yes, we know that, but, uh, we don't build freeways. And they're already congested. If you look at it, you can say, yes, we're adding to it. Um, but they're already, look at five o'clock on the ten freeway, going going home. You know, we know where that's all happened. So, I mean, th- them are all points that are valid, but a lot of it has to do with holistically what the whole thing is. Maybe you start thinking how people shop nowadays. Um, if there's something closer, you can't tell me that it's not traffic, that people go to Highland, go to Costco and shop. And it's still traffic, no matter what you do. So, point-of-sale warehouses do have that potential to have that. The bigger impact on revenue over time. Now, whether you want them or not, or whether the, uh, developer lands them. Is up to, as I said in my last meeting, it's up to the property owner, what kind of businesses they wanna bring in. You know, we have some good owners that are are developers that develop good, good product. I think Ukaypa points turn out, uh, pretty good. They're they're doing a pretty good job of enticing good businesses, et cetera. And my last point on, while warehouses provide higher property tax. And it's reoccurring, though, remember that ma- major retail sales generate ongoing sales tax revenues, we know. And revenue that grows with consumer demand, right? Uh, making them valuable fiscal asset for funding public services, which if we strategically plan, is worked into the plan annually. That we know where we're going and we can pretty much tell from our HDL report what that revenue is gonna be quarterly. We can kind of look at it. Uh, we kind of know what our big producers are now, but that may change over time. As we just try to open up a little bit, uh, eh, eh, and just look at better ways to create revenue. And I, eh, there was really some good points made by some of the speakers of. And I said this last time, yes, we're a beautiful town and we have some pristine areas. And, but we're not that little town anymore. We're a medium-sized community that needs services. And it's hard to transition to that. When you've probably grown up here and you've seen what it was when you were younger. And and people will, you know, they'll shake their heads and not agree. But that that is the reality of what's happening. If you're gonna provide the same level of services. Um, and that's where we're at now. We're finally at that point. That's what I think. I could be wrong, but, uh, that's, I think, where we're at. So we have to make some decisions of how we're gonna provide the services we're gonna provide. I'll close with, we have shown we're making cuts. We are trimming what we can trim. But my thirty years in government, there's only so much you can trim. And I'm gonna say this for for, uh, my last point. We have a wonderful staff that works extremely hard to provide the information we're asking them to do. I'm gonna ask our community to trust our staffs doing the right thing. I see how they work. I know they're here dedicated to our community. Uh, I've heard a couple of comments that staff is steering us a certain way. No, they're just serving us. They're trying to do their best for our community. Um, and they do to get us the information we ask for. And it's vetted. Uh, especially now, we're getting more choices of how we can look at things. And, um, and we review what they give us. So I wanna thank the staff, Jennifer and your staff, for the work you put together. Uh, because you also look for us to make decisions as a staff, for us to move forward. Um, I heard a comment tonight about Bob wants to move forward. Well, there's a slide I saw tonight. For me, maybe you can put it back up there. It showed a timeline from two thousand eight or something. There was like four or five bullets that showed how long we've been working on this thing. Maybe go back a little bit. And I'll end with that finally. It's got a picture of the other councils, I think, in the background or something. It's pretty poignant if you look at it.
Uh, while while Fermin's, uh, pulling that up, one of, one of the, um. Or two points that I wanted to make. And as a, uh, as somebody that has grown up in the town, uh, one of the speakers before. Mentioned Ukaypa Elementary, Ukaypa Intermediate, Ukaypa High and Crafton. And I had that, uh. Uh, superfecta as well in my, in my past. It's, uh, the great four schools of of our town. Um, but but two, two points that you made. Uh, one, just to clarify on the point-of-sale warehouses, warehouses are, um, when you look at retailers and warehouses. Uh, uh, warehouses are the winner for property taxes. Their assessed value on warehouses is higher. Um, sales tax is, sales tax winners are the the retailers. They sell things and, um. Um, so so while the assessed values aren't as much, they sell things and the and the sales tax wins. Um, a point-of-sale warehouse, um, has both. It's a, it's it's kind of like the, um, the Skechers store off the sixty. Uh, in Mobile, it's a warehouse, but they have a showroom, they they have retail. Um, so that point-of-sale, um, um, facility has the property tax, has the assessed value. So it's a a property tax winner, but then it's also selling things out 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 of that shop. Um, and so that's, when I say winning the lottery, that's kind of threading the needle because not only do you have to have a a warehouse, but then you have to have a tenant. That is is doing that. And there's no guarantees. Um, and and so if if that needle was threaded and that the lottery was won. Yeah, it 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 surpasses, it's it's winning the lottery. It's it's a great outcome. However, um, staff does, really has no control on. On tenants or anything like that, so.
That build up to it is that there were study sessions that were done. It's been done with previous councils. They've tried to discuss this over the years. I mean, you know, eh, that we're at a point now that, and we need to make a decision. I mean, this has been going on for quite a while. And even prior to this, uh, so I just, uh. We're culminating, we're finally to that point.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, as a comment was made, I'm trying to push, yeah, I think you just need to make a decision. One way or another, we need to make a decision. That's all I'll say. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I got something real quick and I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim so we can wrap this up. Um, it was mentioned earlier that if the warehouses didn't go in and and the housing element would be affected. And possibly the houses would have to be, those numbers would have to be moved to someplace else in the city. Am I right in my understanding that when you move those numbers, that sometimes, this is my term, it may not be the accurate term. That there's a penalty assessed to moving those numbers from where you said they were gonna be today, moving them someplace else? So in other words, instead of being twenty-five hundred doors, maybe now it's twenty-seven hundred doors?
Um, so it would be more of, um, in terms of dealing with the the housing element. So because we won't have had any traction on this one, essentially the way that the state would look at it is all the sites are deemed infeasible. And so we couldn't count that. So we'd essentially have to plan on new housing sites for the housing element. As a general note, most likely, the property owners in the specific plan would not be willing for us to just downzone their properties and get rid of the units. So most likely would be the 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 unfortunate scenario where. We still have all these units on the books in the plan area, but then we're also having to upzone the other areas in the specific plan. And there's, and what that means is then we're adding the additional unit capacity to whatever the area is. So we're making up for, in this case, the twelve hundred affordable housing units in the specific plan area. In addition to what is already allowed in that area. And then there's some other things with how the state kind of views affordable housing. We got lucky with our housing density of twenty-four units per acre. The default is thirty units per acre. And so if we have some challenges there too, then the state may also pull some additional levers. And so, um, it can just become a much more complicated scenario with dealing with. How HCD will view the housing element process in the net cycle.
Okay, I think I understand. So eh, there's not a clear, like, penalty for having to move the numbers, then I guess is what I'm trying to get at. I- if you move those numbers to someplace else, let's say you move them to District Five. I don't know where you're gonna put them. But you find out a place to put them there, would you move the same amount of numbers or does it have to be additional? Because, uh, it's a now you've moving from an area that is no longer feasible. I thought there was a penalty associated to it. And you may have answered it in your in your answer, but I'm, maybe I'm not fu- fully understanding you.
No, you wanna have to do that. The only time you'd have to like add additional units is if you're doing like a transfer of density. And trying to offset the cost for purchase. But in this case, it wouldn't apply.
Okay. Um. I have other questions and, but I talked a lot last time. I'm trying to let my councilmembers do it this time because last time I think I spent thirty minutes myself. I'm gonna read an email that I got from somebody. Concerning tonight's agenda related to this item. I don't know this individual, but not in my district. It's a very short paragraph. But eh, and I've not, like I said, I don't know him, didn't ask him to write anything, didn't give him any any ideas. So this is all on them. Dear Mayor, I support the economo- economic development in Ukaypa. I am happy to see new businesses opening up along the freeway corridor. And hoping that this progress continues for a lo- for, hope it continues. For too long, I have had to go to other cities to find things that I need and enrich their local economies and creating more jobs for them. I'm sure that there will be some people in our community that wanted to stay exactly the way it was in nineteen seventy or nineteen seventies. Hinged by misplaced nostalgia. But I'm sure there is a way for us to maintain many of our natural and beautiful landscapes and still move into the twenty-first century. For the sake of our economic stability and more, please continue doing the good work of moving Ukaypa forward and keeping us competitive. Here's truly Mr. Omar Moran. And I think that's the heart of the the issue is that there is. A place for everybody at the table when it comes to economic development and bringing things as, uh, options for for revenue and reef and, uh, finances. Uh, I'm not an economist. I'm not an economist, don't claim to be. I'm not even an investor. But when you're investing, you want to be diversified. You don't want all your eggs in one basket. If the economy goes up in one area, another area may go down. So if you are diversified in your approach of revenue, once one goes up, the other may be suffering, but then there may be a time in the economic swing of things where that shifts. And while I understand having retail is beneficial, I think there's also a place for business parks and maybe even some warehouses because some of that adds a different element and uh, layer of revenue to our city. We have to look at it from the standpoint of longevity. This sales tax initiative that went through in November is not a long-term fix. And some of the public speakers are correct and even Councilman Beaver touched on it. Uh, our contracts, we don't have co- we don't have a say in our contracts and as far as uh, the price that we're paying. And we can cut things, but we've heard in the past that they want more law enforcement, more fire department personnel. You want the roads addressed. And if we don't have ways to bring in revenue, Justin's right. We'll be talking about this twenty years later, like we were years before. We're not any further down the road. We've got to make a decision. And you have to look at the finance aspect of it. I think we can be responsible, I mean diversified, but not looking like some of our other communities where all you see is these warehouses. Uh, we have a couple of things working for us. We have a, a representative here that their approach is completely different than what other warehouses and developers have done. It's a different approach. We also don't have the same amount of land available to us that other cities have where they can just slap all those uh, concrete walls up. I think that the cost of everything is just gonna keep going up. Last meeting we had two million dollars worth of fire trucks we ordered, gave approval for. That's just gonna keep going up. As we develop in the city, eventually we're gonna need a ladder truck as we have multi-story buildings. That's a expensive truck too. It's probably more expensive than the other two trucks combined. Law enforcement's not gonna get cheaper. And if you're gonna, having a contract service through the sheriff's department is the cheaper route than having your own law enforcement agency. Insurance is hard to get if you're gonna start your new law enforcement agency. Uh, there's a lot of things that people don't understand when you look at the contracts and things of that nature when it comes to outsourcing your law enforcement, outsourcing your fire department, things of that nature that it ends up being cheaper going that route. It might get cheaper way down the road if you have your own services, but initial startup, initial, initial costs and standing those that services up, super, super expensive. We've got to have some ways to, to put some life into our finances, folks. That's my, that's my point right now is we've got to think about our finances, not just now, but long-term. Mayor Protim?
Can you uh, can you pull up for Calamase's uh, all their building and everything like that? You know, we say we, uh, warehouses are, you know, um, the property taxes and everything like that and stuff. But if you go down to Fontana and you talk to those guys over there and the damage that they do to the streets and how much it costs them, it doesn't, you know, it, the money's not. It, it's outweighs it, you know, by the time you get all the, the um, uh, property taxes. Cause we're not getting point of sale, right? So we're not getting those taxes, right? Am I right? So um, can you go to where the, yeah. So one of the reasons why we're going, um, you guys are looking for the warehouses is to bring infrastructure to, across the freeway. Is that correct? So you see where the warehouses are on, on basically our property, right? You're saying that it's gonna cost them thirty-four, how much, thirty-nine million?
I think thirty-eight million he reported and that's a private development. If city got involved, it'd be double or triple that with prevailing wage.
Yeah, but you gotta look at Shopoff is building that project right across the street. They're bringing infrastructure over there. So we can eliminate the warehouses of, on our side because the infrastructure's coming in from Shopoff. Am I not correct?
The utility is in other infrastructure that's to support Yucipa is not coming from Shopoff.
But you can tie into that, can you not? Can you not tie it? Cause it's, it's not, it's not Calamase's uh, infrastructure, right? It's not their water. It's Yucipa Water District?
I don't know exactly the water provider, but for the pressure zones and all the requirements from Yucipa Valley Water District, they're coming from Avenue D. So this was a design that Yucipa Valley Water District provided to us of the infrastructure that needed.
So they're bringing water into their, their, Shopoff is bringing their um, uh, construction in, right? Right next to our warehouses. That's gonna be bringing all the infrastructure over to that. And we can tie into, to them, right?
As far as, well, it's gonna be different pieces of infrastructure, but the zones and how they interlace the, the water infrastructure isn't necessarily just because it's right next to it. It connects through the water district.
Tie into it and stuff, yeah, but it's, it's, it's almost adjoining properties to right next to each other, right?
It's a little bit further down, but it doesn't connect to here and all the infrastructure for what we have on Oakland Road. But again.
Well, that's gonna be a different thing that you're talking about on, on our side of the freeway, on, not the north side. The north side of the freeway, the infrastructure's coming in, Shopoff is bringing in all, all the infrastructure to their project right in, in that area. Am I not correct?
I don't know what infrastructure, what Shopoff is required from the water district. All I know is what the water district required for our specific plan. And so that's coming from this side of the freeway.
Same, they're putting warehouses, am I not, am I, am I right? Cause they're putting warehouses on their side plus housing.
They're providing warehouses right over here.
Correct. And then they're putting housing, where's, yeah, all in that area right there, right? Where are they gonna get their infrastructure? All their water and power and, and gas?
I don't know where they're getting their water connections.
Taking it right over there, right next to ours. So we would be able to tie in. So the warehouses, we can almost, we can eliminate the warehouses because we're gonna be getting infrastructure from Shopoff's part. We can just tie into there. It's not gonna cost us that much, you know, compared to coming across the freeway.
Well, I do want to point out again on two different elements. One is we do need infrastructure to the north side of the freeway and for Oakland Road corridor for the, the projects that are there. But two is the water infrastructure, just because the water lines may be next to each other, doesn't mean that that's how the infrastructure works. They run on different pressure zones and different elevations. And so how the water hydraulic pressure works is different. And so I'm going off the recommendations from the engineering that was done by the Yucipa Valley Water District of what the water infrastructure needs and development plan was for our plan, which calls for the water coming from there. So as far as I know, the information that was provided to us from the utility provider was it was coming from this side of the freeway, not from Shopoff.
Well, if you call David Graves over at Shopoff right now and, and ask him if he's gonna be bringing in enough water and power and everything to, to support us on our side, ask him what he's, what he, what his answer would be. Cause I have asked that question. So, so the power, the power and the water, I'm sorry? The power and the water and stuff, I'm not worried about with, with the uh, Pacific Oaks coming across there. So I'm, I think that we can eliminate the uh, warehouses there and try to, to get three and four together without the warehouses, but right now you guys can't. You guys aren't letting us do this. That's why I'm, that's why I'm telling you that none of the plans work. Because if we go for three, it, it involves the warehouses. Can we take the warehouses out of it? And take four, three and four together without the warehouses?
Well, four adds an additional warehouse.
To what side? Over here on the other?
Yeah, four adds one additional warehouse to number three.
Take them all the way out.
I, I think if we, if we uh, were to go in that direction, it would be the same concept that Councilmember Wolsey brought up. If we were to split it up into different.
But that's why I'm saying it's how, how do we, how do we vote on this when, when there's people up here that are maybe one that doesn't want the warehouses in this plan? And all, all four, four out of five are for the warehouses.
Correct. Option five is the one that does not uh, include a warehouse. And I, I think it's important to add, uh, your question regarding the utilities, you know? Um, the Yucipa Valley Water District did provide a water supply assessment. Uh, they, they did some preliminary work to determine how the water infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure could serve the freeway corridor specific plan area. And they have um, a service area south of County Line Road as well as north. And as Ben had mentioned, it's based on their pressure zones and their engineering. The pressure zone that would support the development for the freeway corridor specific plan is all coming off from Oakland Road and Avenue D. There's also uh, Western Heights Water uh, company service area within, within the zone. So that water supply assessment included uh, an evaluation of water infrastructure from both of those. And um, I, I don't think we are disagreeing with, with, with you when you say that you could provide utilities from the south side. But the water supply assessment that we received from the water providing agencies did show that their engineering uh, identifies a utility coming from the north side from Oakland.
I'm just, I'm, what I'm just, my point is, is that we can, we can um, have that area developed without the warehouses. Without having them bringing in all the infrastructure over there when we have Shopoff bringing it that close. We, we tap off of them or you, you know, open your, your, your uh, mind to different things. So what we can do, stuff, you know, I mean, the housing development over there and stuff, we can get it all from, from uh, Shopoff's water and power, right? Not have to do.
Are there laws that govern that? Is there water, like water law that says, we can't just say we're gonna tap into somebody, another water district water, right?
It's, it's the same.
So, so it would be Yucipa Valley Water District.
What I mean to say is we don't control the water district.
That, that was where I was gonna go next. The, the city has no jurisdiction to order Yucipa Valley Water District to do anything.
Well, we don't have to order it and stuff. I'm just saying that the infrastructure's gonna be over there.
So.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
So again, I, I, I think it's a, a good question, Mayor Protim, you know? Why could you not bring the infrastructure from this other area? I, I'm not an engineer. I don't have the answer to that question. I think what, what staff is telling you is that we interact with the water district, which is the utility provider for that area. This is the plan that they have. I, I think if there was a question as to could you do something in a different way? What would the cost of that be? Those would be viable questions to send to that agency, but it's not something that your city staff has any control over.
That's what I'm saying is that's what we're putting all our, our eggs in one basket with the warehouses, bringing all that infrastructure over to that area. And just by you uh, brushing on that, that uh, picture that you had with Shopoff having all that, it was at eighteen hundred acres? Is they're developing right there in Calamase?
Yeah, it's a pretty sizable one. I remember the old specific plan didn't have infrastructure ability to connect. And I have not seen the updated infrastructure plan that the water district provided, but I mean historically before, and I don't know if, if uh, in their discussions, uh, the Pacific Industrial have any insight too, but um.
I'm just, you know, there's all the different options and stuff without having the warehouses there to bring the infrastructure over.
Okay, so.
That's fine. If you, go ahead.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I've just, I'm back there. I've been working on this for so long. I knew too many weird details, but uh, I totally get the project. And by the way, I fully respect your guys' decision tonight and everything that's happened. We're, we're in your hands and I totally understand why it's a difficult decision. Just as far as the water goes, we've worked with them hand in hand for many, many, many years before we came to this conclusion. If we could get the water from this side of the freeway and bring it to our project, which we explored for months and months and months and months, we would do it ourselves. I don't want to bring a water line four miles down the road and bore under the ten freeway in order to provide utilities there. They're totally different pressure zones and it's not allowable feat. Um, but I would also news to me if Shopoff approved and actually committing to doing that to provide the benefit to the city, it would be great.
I think.
But it could also benefit the Robinson's property significantly. If that were the case, they're much closer to it and they're two different zones. Even on our own property, we have two different pressure zones where um, if I'm not mistaken, the, the residential side versus the uh, commercial side are two different zones entirely. So it's just, there's, it's a much more complicated answer that could happen probably in this forum, but.
Shopoff was um, trying to work with you on, on outlet from your property onto theirs, right? You guys.
They, we've had, I think, one, maybe two conversations, but we, we do not want any connection with their project to ours as far as
And that's one of the questions that I asked you. What's your outlet on there and stuff? And you're saying that it's part of the um, there's a gate.
Yeah, so there's.
So if there's a fire that's in your area and stuff, everybody has to go out that back gate?
Uh, well, that is an emergency fire gate for emergency fire access.
So if there's a fire in the front and there's no access for you to get out that way, you're going that way. Am I right?
You're using that fire gate. It's really designated, I mean, it's probably a question for the fire department, but uh, it's designated for fire emergency access.
Yeah. So I don't mean to get off the subject or anything like that and stuff, but I'm not. I, I just have a hard time with, I'm sorry, I just have a hard time with, with everyone is connected with the warehouse and we can make this happen without the warehouses there and bring in, you know, retail stores on the south side of the ten freeway and bring in that much more revenue. And not have all that, you know, extra smog. I think that somebody, I was talking to somebody and they said that we're the fourth or the fifth um, polluted city in, in the state of California for going up Yucipa grade. And then if we get these warehouses in there like that and stuff, what are we gonna try to shoot for number one? I mean, I don't want to, so.
Well, not to cut in on you, but just because it's a warehouse and has bay doors doesn't mean, and I have no idea when they're in this business, if they even have ideas of who their potential tenant would be. But I worked in a mortgage facility for many years and it was a very large warehouse that they converted into a call center. They had all the bay doors and it was full of cubicles. There's data centers that use warehouses. They don't have a huge amount of trucks that come into them. You have call centers. There's also even a church in, I think Riverside County that's a mega church that has a warehouse. So there's a lot of uses.
Yeah, I just don't want to take that gamble.
Use a warehouse and does not necessarily mean that it has to involve a truck.
That's true, but that's a gamble that you're gonna have to take. That if, if, what if it does turn into um, trucking, you know, fourteen hundred trucks coming in and out of there? You know, that's a, that's a chance that I don't, I don't want to take and I don't want to take that for my grandkids and stuff, so.
I heard, I'm just curious of going down your path of travel here. So what, based on that reasoning that you're talking about regarding Shopoff, so what does that do with the property owner Robinson's other property on, on the north side of the freeway? Because one of the things he stated in an email to all council members that they received, one of the reasons why Costco wasn't built is because the cost of the infrastructure to bring to that property right there that has a green, on the north.
Yeah, the north side, I don't think is.
No, no, but what the thirty-eight million dollars is allowing all the property owners in this plan to benefit from is to bring the utility down that will benefit the north side property, go underneath the freeway and benefit the south side property. What you're talking about is pulling all the infrastructure from the Calamase side, which is not gonna help Mr. Robinson on the north property, of which that's where he's had an email to council regarding. That's why he couldn't deliver the Costco for his family.
Yeah, and like I said, the, one of the reasons why maybe that Costco reduced their, their um, their um, Yeah, and like I said, the, one of the reasons why maybe that Costco reduced their, their, their I'm, I'm sorry. They reduced their, their offer to them. You know, maybe because of that. There's no access over there. There's really no access. The best access is on the south side of the freeway, right across the street from the.
Mr. Robinson's email said it was the cost of the infrastructure, primarily the utilities is why the program went bust.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I'm telling you that.
I'm having a hard time. Y'all gotta stop talking. I, I can't hear him.
So the best scenario right there for all the warehouses and stuff, I mean, as far as Target, Lowe's, you know, Costco or whatever and stuff would be on the south side of the freeway. The north side of the freeway is just, there's, there's no outlet over there. Where are you gonna come in, just one way in, one way out? The north or the south side of the freeway, or excuse me. Excuse me, the north side of the freeway, our side of the freeway is the best access for any kind of retail store going on.
I don't disagree. I'm just responding to Mr. Robinson's email that was sent to all council members and staff stating why Costco couldn't be delivered here at the city of Yucapu and it was the cost of the infrastructure. So we're pulling it down. That's what the warehousing is proposing to do. The thirty eight million dollars benefits the north and south.
North and south.
It benefits north and south. So if you're gonna say, wait, no, pull it from the east through shop off, of which that goes against what our water district has analyzed in terms of fire safety, all of it.
The thirty eight million takes it, the most of your cost is going to be going underneath that freeway.
Right, but it also benefits the north side properties.
But the north side is not going to be paying that much kind of mon, that kind of money. I believe that if, if we would have put that Costco on the north side of the, the ten freeway, you would have had a better chance at the time.
That's where it was proposed, Mr. Counsel. Yeah, that's, no, it was proposed where, I don't know, I have a pointer. It was proposed for this location.
Oh, that one? Oh, I didn't, I thought it was going on the other side.
So, I mean.
But the cost for the infrastructure on the north side of the freeway is not going to be as much as.
It was enough to work. Costco decided to walk away and the Robinsons didn't want to pick up that tab, nor could the city pick up the tab. So it was sizable enough to where Costco left and they went to Highland.
Yeah, I believe that if you really push the issue and stuff on other retail stores, they'll.
We've had several developers approach that property owner for that location, along with other locations within the freeway corridors, specific plan.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't like the warehouses across the street and I think that if we just opened our eyes to a little, a few more, you know, wider scope and stuff, I think we can make that happen. So, that's my spiel, so.
All right, Councilman Miller?
Mayor Portem, I'm gonna stipulate that you don't want warehouses. I'm gonna stipulate that. Hey, the one thing I do want to ask, so you mentioned, do we have anything from AQMD on any studies on air quality? Maybe we could do that just for, for the future. And then can we entertain a motion now? Would that be okay or to go forward?
Two things. I, I don't see it and, and I, I if it can be done, great, but, but how? How, how? Because we have our highly paid and skilled and trusted city engineer telling us it can't be done. The engineer for this, for Yucapu Valley Water says it can't be done. And, and, and you're saying that we just have to think about it more, but, but to what ends and how long? And I, and I, I get we shouldn't rush, but at the same time, we can't, this can't just be, I mean, this, this conversation has to at some point have a conclusion. Not just, it'll come to us one day. And, and I'm, I, we've had three city managers now and I'm an interim city manager. Is there any other way? The three, the three, y'all right now? Do you tell me right now? Is there, tell me how else we can do this? Minus the warehouses, bringing those utilities in. Cause I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just a simple cop. I don't understand that part. So tell me how.
Based on the cost of bringing the infrastructure through, obviously if there was a way from two thousand eight to current, something would have happened there. I think it's been an ongoing issue and a problem that we've looked at, I think in twenty twenty one, twenty two. That's why, that's why the council, of which you were on it, decided to set the seven parameters of what the city needed to go in, in address because nothing was being built with the oh eight plan and the, the various property owners, at, at one time I said before, it was two, now we're, I think at five. They just can't pencil it out. It doesn't pencil out and I, it'd be great if we could win the Lotto in a different way. But I don't think staff's here, you know, in interest to upset some of the members of the community. I think what we're trying to do is find a solution for all property owners that have invested in that property for decades. And they haven't been able to deliver a plan. I mean, so we've had the Home Depot offer, we had that Walmart offers, we've had Target conversations, we've had Costco conversations. They've all passed by due to issues relating to what the communities wanted there, of which then they go and drive both directions to now get the services from it. And in addition, that no one can seem to make it pencil without the current opportunity that we have been given.
Did, did the conversation with Walmart and Home Depot before the referendum happen, did that get far enough down the road to, to talk about utilities? What was the answer then?
Back then, they were willing to pay for the utilities.
Well, I'm glad we let that pass us by. Unbelievable. Okay, so.
And if I may just add for additional time contact, so we did have a planning booth at the, yeah, the Music and Arts Festival. We had pretty good attendance of people attending to it. A lot of residents that did visit us wrote down on things that they would like to see and we had a lot of people that wrote, they would like to see either Walmart or they say, no, I don't want a Walmart, I want a Target. Or no, I don't want a Target, I want a Walmart. And a number of people said, I know Highland just got Costco, but can we get Costco too? And there was a lot of that sentiment, similar to Mayor Thorpe's, your comment that you got from the email of people driving to outside jurisdictions to do the shopping that they'd rather not have to, to do. And that was a very consistent theme of what we got during the, the YMF event at our booth.
Last, last thing. Just to clarify this, and I think we brought this up during the wine country plan as well. Tonight, whatever we're choosing is not a project. We're not, we're not hearing the project ideas, right? This is a, the, the specific plan. Is that accurate? At some point, there will be a plan for a, for the construction of something. And at that point, then I would ask, okay, if, if they're going to want to build a two million square foot warehouse, I would look towards our development, say, okay, what can we do, Mr. City Attorney, to benefit? Can we say only electric truck traffic? Can we say you will not enter these roads, no commercial vehicle traffic between these hours? Is that legal? So we say, hey, if the sun is up, there's no commercial traffic coming into our city. Not on that, not on those high ramps. So what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, we're not saying yes to a warehouse tonight. We're saying yes to a concept and at some point you're gonna go back to us with a, with a project that we're gonna try to then fit into a box.
So if, if anything, we're not even at the specific plan, then we're getting direction based on tonight, we will finalize the specific plan, come back and then, then your step is correct, then we would come back later with the actual project, so.
So everything that you just mentioned are reasonable conditions of approval that other legislative bodies like this one have considered with large projects like that. You know, you look at the all electric trucks, you have to look at whether you have the infrastructure, you have to look at the additional wear and tear on the roads because of it. But you look at increases to air quality. Those are all the kinds of things that would come forward at a project level application. But we can certainly start brainstorming those now. Luckily I've had start on some of that because of other work I've done. But we can certainly have that discussion in the future.
Now, I love this town. I've lived here my entire life. It is not as easy as you think to have one of these answers. I promise you, no matter what goes this tonight, today, tonight, there's a consequence for it. And my name and the rest of ours is gonna be tied to it in perpetuity. And which means when our city financially fails because we didn't allow this to happen, that's my name tied to it. And then to say, yep, Justin Bieber was one that said no to development, just like whoever passed that referendum back then, so we had nothing. And now we're having this conversation now. It's not as easy as you think. It's not as clear cut as you think. Could you please, ma'am? No. Ma'am, come to order. Ma'am? Ulti? Sorry to put you in this position. Can you escort her out? Yes. Sorry, fellow. I was actually looking at everybody. I looked at Christine several times because I look at her frequently for support. I looked at all right, Mr. Grendland. Okay.
Councilman Beaver?
All right, I want a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go with staff's recommendation for option three. And remember, it's just an overlay. This will all come back to planning commission if some project comes forward. I'm gonna go with staff's recommendation that's been vetted, they've been studied. That's my motion, option three.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so this is a roll call vote if I'm not mistaken, correct? All right, ma'am.
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Venable?
No.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to item number twenty two. If I'm not mistaken, I believe recommendation by staff was that this gets moved to June ninth. Do I have a motion to carry this?
Mayor, if we could open the public hearing and then we'll have staff continue the.
Okay.
So Mayor, if we open the public hearing and then continue it, we don't have to renotice the public hearing.
Copy. All right. So we'll open the public hearing for item number twenty two. Current time is ten fifty two. And now we'll turn it over to Ben, I guess.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We request that you continue this item to dates, date specified, which is June ninth, twenty twenty five. And that is my presentation.
And you need a motion from us? All right. Do I have a first?
Make a motion.
Second.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number twenty three. Mr. Benson, welcome back. Should have, should have done this one. You had the other one earlier, so you could have been finished.
Yeah, yeah. I'm emotionally drained. I didn't even have to vote for anything. I was just sitting here listening.
Talk fast. We'll listen fast.
I will. All right, so tonight we're gonna talk about ordinance number four fifty four.
Trevor, I'm sorry, can I, can you open the public hearing for this one, sir, and announce the time, please?
Okay, the current time, okay, we'll open the public hearing and the pub, the time right now is ten fifty three.
Thank you, sir. Sorry.
Now it's yours.
Okay. Tonight we're gonna talk about ordinance number four fifty four regarding firearm storage. Under federal and California law specified persons, including felony arrestees, persons convicted of certain misdemeanors and individuals subject to qualifying civil commitments like a fifty one fifty are prohibited from possessing firearms. When the owner of the firearm becomes a prohibited person or when a firearm is evidence in a criminal proceeding, the owner must lawfully transfer the weapon to either a law enforcement agency for safekeeping or a federal firearms licensee for storage pending lawful disposition. Since twenty twenty one, the Yucapu Police Department has accepted over three hundred and seventy one firearms for storage. Each firearm must be logged into a state and federal database, stored and secured evidence facility, inspected periodically and formally released or destroyed when the owner becomes legally eligible or by a court, so orders. Every sheriff station, every county sheriff station in the surrounding contract cities already have fees associated for this. The city of Yucapu does not have a fee associated for this. And because of that, we have people coming from as far as San Diego for us to store their firearms for them. The current fee adopted by the County Board of Supervisors is, the first firearm is eighty dollars. Every additional firearm is thirty nine dollars and there's a two dollar per firearm storage fee. The ask here is to adopt the County Board of Supervisors County Code regarding firearm storage. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comments.
Okay. So with that, we can have, we'll have closed the public hearing. Current time is ten fifty five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, can we do a roll call vote on this, please? Thank you. Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number four fifty four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yucapu, California, adopting by reference section one six point zero two two six of chapter two of division six of title one of the San Bernardino County Code to establish a schedule of fees for firearm storage and other sheriff's department services rendered within the city.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to councilman and women's comments and reports.
Mayor, we still have one more public hearing, item number twenty four.
Boy, I'm, I'm doing great. I'm all off kilter, aren't I? All right. I'm trying to get us out of here.
We can open the public hearing and announce.
Public hearing for item number twenty four, current time is ten fifty six. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing deals with Assembly Bill twenty five sixty one, which was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September twenty second, twenty twenty four. It deals with staffing vacancies. Legislative intent of AB twenty five sixty one declares that job vacancies in local government are widespread and high job vacancies impact public service delivery. To mitigate these impacts, the law requires agencies to report annually on vacancies, identify any policies or practices that may hinder hiring or retention and provide recognized bargaining groups an opportunity to present during the public hearing. We do have one recognized bargaining group, the YCEA. I believe that they have declined to present. The city has seventy five full-time equivalent authorized positions, of which forty five are represented by the YCEA. The city has eight vacancies, of which four are represented by the YCEA. Citywide, five of those vacancies are unfunded, of which two are represented by the YCEA. None of those percentages equate to the twenty percent cap that would require additional information to be provided. That concludes the presentation.
Okay. Any public comment?
No comments.
All right. We will close the public hearing. It is ten fifty seven. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, now we're to councilmen reports. Council member reports. You're up.
I forgot all about that. In the last two weeks, Mr. Miller and I went to the SCAG sixtieth conference in Palm Desert. It was very interesting. So much of it though pertains to, you know, the area over there. But we, we were there. And then this week, three of us, Ms. Crawford and Mr. Miller and I attended the city, county conference in Lake Arrowhead and it was very good. They had some really good discussions, especially one on warehouses. That was very informative, so it was, it was good.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, besides ending that, I thought we had a good job collaborating with our fellow council members from different areas and it was a, a good job to get together. And also attended the county held a, an emergency operation kind of training for executives and electeds at the county operations center. It was really good training, just to get to know each other from different communities and, and to help us coordinate. It was really good training, just to get to know each other from different communities, and um, and to help us coordinate, you know, with our our different entities when things happen, so I was glad to attend on our behalf, and uh, it was good training, so I was real proud of the, uh, our county EOC did a good job.
Councilman Beaver?
Nothing, sir.
Mayor Portem?
Um, the lecture series, we have a lecture series coming up on May seventeenth.
I don't know if I heard.
Sweet.
In the meantime, in the meantime.
This is, uh, I think it's uh May seventeenth, it's on the sun and and water, right? So if you guys can make it, that'd be great. Um, also, Megan did a fabulous job on the uh Music and Arts Festival. She did a fantastic job, so. And we got the rodeo coming up this weekend too, so make sure you get your tickets and come see me out there, so. We have a bike rodeo? Saturday morning. What time?
Nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven. At Ucaipa High School. All right, well, that's it.
Okay, and my sentiments, uh, also, the staff did a great job on the uh Music and Arts Festival. There was a great turnout for Love Ucaipa for the folks that worked in our community as well. Um, so thank you to all that were there, to the different events, whether it be the theater, that's the volunteers, or it was helping out at the YMAF. That brings us to the conclusion of our comments and reports. City manager, do you have any announcements?
No, I think you all covered them.
Okay, so we are adjourned at two minutes after eleven. Yeah, I'm good.